I'd like to bring the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting to order. Please note that we're being recorded.
And I'll bring the Concord School Committee meeting to order. Welcome. Fun to have some student faces here.
I don't see any public comments. Anybody want to make a public comment? So we'll go right into recognitions.
Fun stuff.
Yeah, we're really excited to have you all here. So Mrs. Church has invited you on our behalf so that you can talk about your upcoming presentation or production through your presentation. So we're eager to hear about it. And given the conversation I had in the hallway this afternoon, I think you're eager to share it. So come on over and share with us.
I'm borrowing Amy from her G.
Certainly.
Do we need mics or can we?
I think you're good if you project.
We're theater kids.
You're probably good at that.
I feel like this group can project.
Better be able to, exactly.
So thank you so much for having us here. My name is Melissa Cherish. I am the theater teacher and director at Concord Carlisle High School and very proud to work with these students. I thought we would just sort of introduce ourselves quickly, just kind of going down the line. These are members of the cast and the crew of our fall production.
So I'm Grace.
I'm Sam.
I'm David.
I'm Shani.
I'm Leah.
I'm Laurel.
I'm Najia. Hi, Amy.
I'm Nagy.
I'm Sarah.
So we are working on our fall production of The Laramie Project by Moises Kaufman and the Tectonic Theater Project. And we were invited here tonight and we're very grateful to be here to share with you a little bit about it. So, just one more. So we had a member of the original Tectonic Theater Company, which is theater company in New York City. And Barbara Pitts McAdams was a member of the original company that traveled to Laramie, Wyoming to conduct the interviews with the people in Laramie after the incident with Matthew Shepard. And she came and did a workshop with us last Monday. And she said, "Any good play leaves you with a question in your mind or a call to action." And one of the reasons that we chose The Laramie Project this year is that this particular play does both. I think it leaves you with lots of questions and a definite call to action. So we performed The Laramie Project this year for several reasons. One of them is to honor the story of Matthew Shepard, who was assaulted and killed in Laramie, Wyoming in 1998. He was a college student. And he was killed for being gay. And we also want to speak for those whose voices are still silenced in our town, in our state, in our country, in our world. And also to explore the idea of perspective and truth. And the structure and style of this play really support this exploration. It's very important right now to kind of analyze how important finding the truth is and looking at perspective. Moises Kaufman asks in the introduction to The Laramie Project, "How is Laramie different from the rest of the country and how is it similar?" It's a very important question. So we have some students to sort of take you through some of the details from our production.
Hi, I'm Laurel. So in our show, one of our characters, Father Roger Schmidt, says, "I trust that you people, that if you write a play of this, that you say it correct, that you say it right. And I think you have a responsibility to do that." And we are kind of basing how we're doing the show off of that quote.
So in 1998, Matthew Shepard was brutally beaten at the hands of Erica Kenny and Russell Henderson in Laramie, Wyoming for being openly gay. And the Tectonic Theater Company wanted to travel to Laramie to interview the people of the town and see their opinions on what had happened.
So basically, the style of the show is it's formatted in interviews. And so you have characters that were people from Laramie, characters that are interviewers from the Tectonic Theater Company. And you have moments of them being interviewed and them just speaking about their experiences. And you also have moments of people in Tectonic talking about their own experiences. And basically, they put all of this together, whether it was Tectonic external entries or the interviews, to create the story of Matthew Shepard through the interviews.
So although CCHS does do a very good job making a very inclusive learning environment and they do a great job of creating like a community for those who are LGBTQ+, there's still a lot of hidden issues that are brought out early happening today. And the show really brings forward a lot of those hidden issues that lie below the surface. And even in a progressive town like Concord, there's still a lot of these issues. And it's very important to do shows like this to bring up those issues.
And so what we want to achieve through The Laramie Project is we kind of want to bring up a conversation, some awareness within Concord. And we want to show that through this show that there is hope for community and that we are willing to tackle these tough issues and help any students, any members of the community who are feeling kind of invalidated. And can actually see a little bit of progress already happening because the book is actually being taught in some of our juniors' English classes. And we hope that maybe in like families, this can come up as a conversation. You know, obviously, there's a serious nature. But we hope that in our schools, we can kind of further our welcoming community at CC. Finally, we want to make sure we portray the seriousness of the production. We're not here to dramatize or glamorize what happened to Matthew Shepard. We're here to just tell the story the way Father Roger said it, to say it right.
So hi, I'm Sam. I'm master carpenter. I lead the sets department with the friends you over there.
Hi.
We just wanted to share our vision for text. So the set is made out of reclaimed wood from an old shipping pallet that is meant to have sort of a distressed look as to, you know, reflect the energy of like a small town, like authentic look of Laramie, Wyoming, and to create like an organic atmosphere.
Yeah, just to say like, we want to keep it authentic and organic and real and not take away from the story. And Barbara Pitts, who came from the workshop that Melissa Cherish was describing, said it looked like Laramie, which was a huge honor because we worked so hard to make it seem like that. So that was really cool.
So one of the things I love, I came to CC last year was my first year after teaching for many years at a high school in New Jersey. And one of the things I loved instantly about CC theater is that students take on important leadership roles that in a lot of other schools are assumed by adults. So I thought that some of them could talk about their roles a little bit.
Hi, I'm Laurel again. I'm the props manager. Basically, I just collect and design all of the things that actors are carrying around and using that aren't like set pieces. And it's really fun because I'm mainly an actor. I've done theater for my entire life. But to be kind of the opportunity to do something on the tech side of things and to get hands-on with something I love was a really great experience for me.
Hi, I'm Sarah Long. I run the head of house program. I also run the fundraising part of CC theater. We'll get a little more into that later. But as for head of house, so I love being a student leader because I help organize other students and I help organize what the first thing you see is when you come into the theater, which is really great.
So I'm Amy. I'm the stage manager and I'm also the assistant director. And through that, I help organize the cast. I help walk scenes with our director, Melissa Cherish again. And it's really cool for me to be able to see how everything happens in the background, how everything, like every little piece comes together and become the show it is. And then we also have all our other student leaders down there.
As you can see, there are a lot.
Every department has a student one.
So the whole work and the Tectonic Theater Project workshop. So the Tectonic Theater Project wrote The Laramie Project in a series of both moments as you see rather than traditional scenes. So a moment is not only a right to be in a style, but also lead in our specific moments in a specific show.
And there's many aspects that create a moment, such as the gestures one uses, the levels, as in if they're sitting or standing, the texts that they're actually saying, and of course, all the lighting, sound, and costumes that go into it.
Sketching is also a big, huge part of moment work because, as I said there, it's similar to an artist's sketches very well. It's changing and reworking and discarding and erasing and putting everything together to create a really plummy moment.
And because The Laramie Project takes place in the aftermath of the event, it gives way to a type of documentary-style theater, which works well with moment work because they're able to put many different characters together and have them talk with each other.
Hi, I'm Sarah again. As I mentioned, I'm head of house for CC. So I'll be talking a little bit about fundraising and what we do. So as the head of fundraising, we fundraise both for CC theater. So we raise money for the program and we do stuff like we organize bake sales. And another thing we're doing, a new thing this year, we're doing a formal wear sale. So that's gonna be fun. It's on the menu. And then the other thing we're doing starting this year is we're trying to attach each CC theater's show to a charity. And we're trying to fundraise for that charity through the show. So for example, in this show, we're doing the Matthew Shepard Foundation, clearly because Matthew Shepard is a big part of Laramie Project. And their program, Erase Hate, helps to inform people and help stop hate crimes happening.
So in terms of our vision for the future, I have a Brecht quote there and a quote from Auguste Boulal, who are two theater practitioners that I very much admire. We will continue to provide as many students as possible the opportunity to create theater that is high-quality and also challenging and theater that asks important questions. So The Laramie Project is the weekend before Thanksgiving this year. And the Spring Musical is the same weekend as it has been for the past few years, which is Mother's Day weekend in May. And then, so anyway.
So William Owen, who is a junior, he is making documentary that is kind of showing what it's like to make a play from start to finish. This is a preview of what it's gonna be like at the end.
I did love that.
Hi, William. I am in ninth grade, seventh. A junior.
Twelve grade.
My first show at CCHS was Guys and Dolls.
I did the Dresch &amp; Chaperone last year.
I have been in school performances, at school performances.
In more scenes than I'll play. And I've done Dresch &amp; Chaperone. Yes, yeah, I've done every play live here at Concord Carlisle.
I think I really want to give to the show and to this like town in general, you know. I feel like Concord, well, we are, I feel like a pretty liberal town and like, you know, fairly accepting. I still feel like there's a bit of a taboo around this sort of thing. Like I feel like if I talk to adults or, you know, other people in the community about like all of these things in the LGBTQ+ community, you know, it's kind of a little, oh, it's gay, it's straight, there are a few things in between. But I feel like it's not as, you know, kind of well-known. And I hope people come and see it and be like, wow, these kids are like really, and like these kids are really putting out these tough themes and this is such an important subject. And, you know, I hope to open people's eyes maybe to it a little bit more. There are people out there who are fighting for these sort of things, like with what Matthew Shepard went through. And I hope that it touches people in the community, that they'll be inspired to go out and be like, oh, you know, there are these people who are being discriminated against and stuff like that. And, you know, maybe open people's eyes to it a bit more. Like, thank you. I'm so happy. Awesome.
It's a nice little problem change. That's it.
We really appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak with you all. So thank you so much for having us.
Great.
Can we ask a little question?
Sure.
You really piqued me at curiosity when you were talking about moments and sketching and working with scenes and everything. How much in this has been something that you all have created your own feel for each scene? And how much flexibility has there been in producing this play in terms of how much of it feels like it's on script and how much of it is up to the way you envision it?
Yeah, I'd say it's extremely flexible. I mean, we've had multiple rehearsals, but we've actually had to figure it out for ourselves. Melissa just is like, you go ahead. We kind of figured out and see what works. And then, and then we were forced onto it, like we talked about sketching. There's some to just figure it out for ourselves.
It's also fun to like combine the stuff we do to create like an overall party. Whoa, excuse me. Your direction vision to do a higher show and working as Melissa. Is there really any great experience for everyone because it gives everyone the opportunity to see like a tech aspect in a way?
It's great.
It's great. Thank you all so much. I can't wait to come see the show.
Exactly. I can't wait to see it.
It's so happy.
I mean, these are the messages we are talking about over up here. And so it's, I think, just so powerful. I spend a lot of my time figuring out how to reach all of you. And I, there's no better way for you to reach your peers. So thank you. I think the messaging of the whole show is gonna, is gonna matter greatly.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for being here.
Yes.
Such great stuff. I can't wait. I can't wait to see it.
And are the tickets available right through the high school website?
Yes.
No, they're on that link.
They're on that link.
Yeah, if you can, if you go to Performing Arts and you click theater, then.
It'll take us there. Good. Thank you.
Or you can email me too. Also, I don't have social media, but there is on the Instagram page for CC Theater, there is a link to that. I can get there.
Oh, great. Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're gonna postpone the reading of the minutes from nine twenty-four because there were some suggested edits that we don't have, we haven't had a chance to look at as a group. So we'll do those next week. And so, Amy, do you want to give us an update?
Yes. So for sports records right now, girls soccer is ten to three to four. Girls cross-country just won DCLs, so they're gonna go into the Eastern Championships now. And boys got third. Football won their game on Saturday, on Friday, and they're seven to no now, so they're undefeated. And they go into the playoffs this weekend. Volleyball is currently eight and two. Field hockey also participates in, kind of, this weekend, and they are ten to five to three. Boys soccer plays LS, and they're ten to two to three. And then winter sports competition closes on November fourteenth, so that's starting up right now. And then moving on from sports, AP registration closes on November first, so that's also coming up. And the early application deadline for those who plan college right now is November first. And then also coming up is November third, which is FAFSA day, which is when the students can kind of look at financial aid opportunities they can have. So that as you guys know, Laramie Project rehearsals are continuing. The chorus concert with the faculty choir will be on November fifth. And the band's having their home parade concert on November seventh. And then in terms of student stress, I think most of what's coming is because the end of quarter one is coming right now. So a lot of tests happening and grades are closing. But I think overall, it's similar to last time.
Very good.
Great. Thank you.
What's going on?
A lot.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Thanks.
And again, I will reiterate what I did last week. We have another meeting next week.
Yeah.
If you can come, great. But don't feel like you have to.
Right.
So chairs and liaisons.
Do you want to start off or? I will do a quick update since we don't have a middle school item on for later. I'll just do a quick, excuse me, Carly, I'll do a quick update on the Concord Middle School.
Can we just add it back? Can we possibly interject that because I have some questions?
Oh, questions.
I wanted to labor. Do it in the Concord section.
Okay, we'll do that later.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I'm just gonna do a thirty-second update. If you have questions, we'll do it later. Definitely. Then I would just, from a chair's perspective, just share one thing that's going on this week. It's not even as part of my role as chair per se, but something the school's involved in. We heard about students going to Nanai, Japan a few weeks ago. And now we have a delegation from Nanai, Japan here this week. I know Cort has been very involved in helping to host them. And the two of us, Lori and Mike, were at a luncheon today to welcome them at the high school. And I just want to thank the administration for being involved in that. It's really a neat just demonstration of the relationship that we have, this sister-city relationship and the relationship between the schools. And it is strong and continues on year to year. And you can speak more about it if you want.
Twenty-two years strong.
Yep.
And they had a very good visit, not only to the high school, but prior to that, at our townhouse. And there were good informal conversations, good ceremonial interactions as well. And I think that it really sets the stage for our next delegation to go to Nanai very nicely. But they'll be here through the week. And every day is a very busy day for them with lots of wonderful Concord hosting. We're delighted they're here.
Yep. I just want to welcome them. Other things from your perspective, we were all together a week ago, so there isn't too much time to do.
Well, getting FinCom stuff.
Okay. Other liaison reports, has anybody been at FinCom or Select Board or CPAC or?
Yes, I'm just trying to, I'm not getting still.
Oh, okay.
Is there anybody else that can help?
Anybody else that liaisons reports?
Well, I've got something that will fit under liaise more than anything else, and that is the work that we're attending to around trips. And I want to report just to follow up last week that Lori and I have met once. And we are at work looking over the policies. Once again, they can't bear enough scrutiny, policies being what they are. I haven't found anything alarming, but we've got a little bit of tidying up, we think, to do that will help consistencies across policies and across internal working documents. But more importantly, and in the very short term, we want to bring to you for next week's consideration an update of the field trip form that the teachers produce for purposes of school committee initial approval consideration and then final approval consideration. Because of course, we have initial approval for a number of trips already behind us. And we have that final approval coming up within a matter of some weeks, no later than very early December. So we're going to look at that form and see how that can be a final approval form that gives us more information that we know the teachers are in fact generating anyway. So it's just a matter of collecting in a comprehensive way for the school committee. So that work is well in hand.
Great. Thank you for taking the time to do that. Appreciate it.
I have, I do have one other. And again, because we don't have a formal place for it on the agenda. But this is one that I think is an appropriate time for us to give pause and give thanks for the life and the service of Dick Cedarstrom. Dick passed away about a week and a half ago. Richard Cedarstrom was a, what? It's hard to, it's hard to overstate how important he was to the Concord Carlisle schools. He served here for fully forty-three years. Chemistry teacher, a coach. There are legions of people who are gonna watch this video and remember Dick Cedarstrom from the classroom or from the playing fields. Or importantly to all of us, the work he did as personnel director. Because I think this is where we still live with the mark that he made. He served as the personnel director for some twenty-seven years. And I think was unequaled for his integrity, for his work ethic. These are easy platitudes, but it's the real thing with this gentleman. He was quite exceptional. And where he really worked hard and was ahead of his time was in working on minority recruiting. Very, very difficult in the period in which he was doing this, trying to keep Concord out in front against all the obstacles around minority hiring for a district like Concord and a district like Concord and Carlisle. But he was at the forefront of these efforts. He worked not only in the region, but nationally to try to represent the Concord and Concord Carlisle. So we are in his debt. We extend our sympathy to his family and give thanks for his contributions.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
So one thing I would mention is we, the Effective Governance Workshop is this weekend. And it's Saturday. Anyone can just give me a second here if you have time. Nine to twelve. Three different sessions, open meeting, public records, town meeting, effective meeting management, which, and it's always an informative session. It was highly recommended for new members especially, but all of us could benefit from it. And would-be candidates for office. Yes. Yes. And anybody who just wants to know more about what's going on and how this stuff happens. But I also asked that they consider for next year giving the school committee an opportunity to talk about school committee process. So we'll see where that goes. But I think, you know, there are some things that are different. I think oftentimes, people will think of the Select Board and school committee in the same breath and does the same things, and that's really not the case. It's sort of two different venues and two different, I'm losing the word. Authorizations, if you will. Because of our, mainly because of state law around education. So I think it would be beneficial if we had a placeholder. It's put on by the Select Board. Anything else, liaison?
CPAC?
I don't have something there.
Yes, so CPAC has met on October twenty-fourth. They went over the new events that they are planning for the members and student population, parents of the student population at large. There is a one event that they would like to have advertised to all of the families and community, which is the Special Education Evaluations and Eligibility presented by the Federation for Children with Special Needs, which will be held on Wednesday, November sixth, from seven to nine P.M. at Learning Commons at the high school. If we can include everybody in letting them know that this will be coming up. Things that were, that were brought up is just getting more information about the programs and things that came up from the forum, any changes after. Our school committee time is not so much focused on budget there.
Sure. So Reese Groupie and I are at the CPAC meeting in November, November seven?
Seven is the coffee.
Yeah, so Willard, we're both there and we'll certainly be answering all those questions and trying to talk on both the programs and what the feedback we got in September has done. For us, it's certainly highly informed, all the work we're continuing to do. So that'll be a great session to talk more on that.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks.
So.
Correspondence. Concord just had one. It was a, it was thoughts on what should be done with PBDD. And as you saw, my response was, in case anybody knows, no, we don't decide what to do with the PBDD building once we don't need it anymore. We surplus it back to the town. It becomes a town decision. So first know that and onward. That was it for this week.
And reports for discussion.
We actually, once we put it all together, we didn't have any new piece to put there. So most of it fell under ongoing business.
New and ongoing business. So we'll keep moving right along.
October one enrollment.
Yeah, so this is our annual sharing with you of the formal October one enrollment numbers. This is the set of data that drives funding formulas, not only for our local regional agreement, but for all of the state and federal aid and grants and things like that. So we're providing that to you, just as we always have. Things are fairly steady, which is good news. Some slow decline coming up from the elementaries, which will actually be relieved both, I think, at the middle and high schools as it makes its way up. It'll be interesting to see if it starts to fill in. The probably thing that I will highlight for the Concord Committee is the split between Willard and Alcott right now, seventy students. And that's also been steady. So I think we're gonna give that a look in terms of who's assigned to what. I can talk more in detail once we work more out. I don't want to alarm anyone by giving you any of the things we're looking at. But just that's a, that's a pretty big difference.
Alcott's low.
Alcott's high. Willard is low.
Willard is low.
Which is.
Which I understand is different than what was for kids.
Which is different. Only four or five years ago, Willard was at five hundred. And Willard was really high for a while.
Is it purely geography-based?
It is not totally geography-based.
So you have flexibility.
We do have a little bit of flexibility, so that's.
Lori, off the top of your head, do you have any idea how many U students are Alcott?
I, yeah, I do, but I'd rather not talk too much on that.
No, no, I just like, I mean.
It's about fifty-ish.
It's a long bus ride.
Yeah, so we're looking at, I don't know what we're gonna do with anything. I, it's been there for a year or two, and I waited it out. We're just giving it some talk now to see if there's anything.
I have heard that feedback from people who live at U S. It's a considerable haul.
Is it looking more broadly than that? We're looking at this, you're down by, you really have one year to pass out of your priorities.
Right.
Thirty, thirty students down, K through eight. Are you seeing, you know, we spent a lot of time in Carlisle, really over this stuff.
Right.
You seeing it slowing down? Are you seeing like families not moving out, aging up?
Nothing that's dramatic. The piece that we have noticed, as you'll see, is if you go to the overall. The, the piece that we have noticed, as you'll see, is if you go to the overall sizes, which is on page two, I guess, of three, where it totals up K through five. So you can see right now, we're ranging two oh nine in kindergarten and as high as two thirty-eight in grade four. And then if you look at the middle school, you can see it's closer to the high end of that. So there is some slow. What we can't predict, and what we're going to try to do a better job of predicting, is centralizing registration will help a lot because Aaron and I can see it all. Is as the grades move up, are we filling in some of that with, with moving, you know, people moving into town? So I'm only in the beginning of year three, so I can't really say exactly what the patterns are. That's certainly the piece we're watching.
You can take a look back.
Sure.
If this chart extended.
The elementaries are definitely down from where they were. There's no question about that. And that's remained fairly steady. So the question is whether as they age up to the middle and high school, whether those numbers stay steadier. We're filling them in as things move.
Because last year's eighth grade, this year's ninth grade was like the largest haji hat. You don't see another blip like that coming, right?
No.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the way we approach it, again, Carlisle's a third in size, but I'll just give you the Carlisle framework. It may guide you in how you approach the problem. Limited housing stock. So the first question is, is significantly new housing stock being created? If not, then you've got a bound problem. Then you say, okay, not a starter town. So typically, young parents aren't buying. So yeah, it makes sense if there's fewer grade school kids and that they tend to buy when the kids are middle or high. But you've got to validate that with data and should be able to do that. Then the third thing, in my opinion, is, you know, multi-generational town, right? Everybody likes to age in place. What's the demographic doing? And what we find, of course, in Carlisle is, you know, people don't move. So, you know, and I may have mentioned this in the past here, but say, Supery, I'm told, you know, the day the last kid graduates from high school, bam, goes to the for sale sign. You know, it's a school town. We're not, right? We're a community, we're multi-gen, which is a good thing. So then you look at that. And I, I think we've done a lot of studies, so we've concluded that we're kind of level at where we're at for now. Don't foresee a growth, but it's pretty important, which is three times larger.
Oh, please know that anyway, I think I'm not studying.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm just putting, I'm putting a pitch in to say, you know, gather the demographic data. It's not that hard to do and then really think about trending because it will guide all these campaigns.
Absolutely, and I've done all that in my previous districts and different drivers impact different communities differently. I, I started in a district where the life birth rate on the census could really predict enrollment in the elementary schools, what we're receiving right now for life. Birth rate is really act, probably most accurate for kin, the five-year-olds going to kindergarten. But when we get down to the, the, you know, infants in town, it's not necessarily reflective. So we're, we're looking really carefully at all of that and knowing sort of the drivers here, which you're right, many of those same factors are the case here. So more to come.
Yeah, let me just add a couple of things to this. The, I always like to point out that we are well-supported by taxpayers and households that don't have kids in schools.
Yes.
The town is actively looking at ways to increase aging in place opportunities, both in their own homes and creating a housing stock that allows people to move from bigger homes into smaller homes. You know, that's challenging in our town because we are space limited. But that is a very active process and typically there are two or three warrant articles every year at town meeting relating to housing. So I think it's important that we understand those and that as we talk to parents of school-age kids, that we all recognize the importance, this is a two-way street. And that parents of school-age kids need to be supporting those efforts as well. There is one thing on the horizon that's probably going to get approved. Still being battered around the planning board and zoning board, but it's, I think it's thirty-seven units of housing in West Concord that are, I believe, two, three and four bedrooms, single-family homes. I suspect that, you know, I, I mean, we can all sort of cuff a number on our head, but many of those will have students, many of them will have two students. I've made that statement just as a statement, not a, you know, not any sort of, anything other than the qualitative aspects of what that means for schools and school funding, the planning, the public gearing. And, you know, certainly people understand that. They don't make decisions based on that when awarding goades from planning board and zoning board. But, you know, that's in the offering, it's likely to get approved, it's likely to start built sometime in 2020. And my guess is we'll start seeing movements the way those projects typically work. Twenty twenty-one, maybe next year. So there'll be, you know, there's potential for thirty to sixty kids.
And is the planning board also moving ahead with the, I can't remember the acronym, the turning your in-law apartment into a?
Accessory.
Accessory.
Accessory apartments. Yeah, there's discussion about that. There's also discussion about zoning for multifamily stuff because we have a lot of big homes that, you know, are not, are not hot commodities necessarily in the real estate market.
Right.
Might be a way to increase housing without increasing footprint.
I guess we need to stay tuned.
So a lot of activity there. It's certainly something Concord is constantly looking at. So we're not the only ones that are paying attention to the data that derives from.
Sure.
And we all know the trends sometimes that come into place when you build a new building and open it.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to go to the middle school part or not. Certainly that's another study to be done.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, that's.
We're not going to guess on numbers now, but it, it happens.
Probably more important to do once we've.
Right, exactly. If we build it.
This is wood, right?
There's a wood product.
There's a wood product.
Empire product.
Something wood is wood.
So anybody, any other comments, questions about enrollments?
Yeah, take, take one moment, speak to out of district, if you would. Are we, in your estimation, slowing what would otherwise be a trend toward increasing out of district? Is that what the numbers tell you?
We certainly are, just in terms of placements over the short past few months and late last year. So if we were, and we're going to bring you all this in a nice type package with the historic, historic number of placements and the current number, and we did a little bit of that, I think, in August or early September. Certainly the numbers are slowing. We're doing it very carefully, though. This is about what's best for kids and making sure that they're staying in district if that's going to serve them well and leaving district if that's going to serve them well. And same in terms of the other way around, if they're potential returning back to us. So certainly the numbers are going to shift, but that's by design. We're going to just take it one student at a time.
Thank you.
So next up, superintendent goals.
Yes, thank you. I really was, my thought was to just highlight what I modified based on our last conversation. So I took some time back in it myself and heard all of your feedback, which was really helpful. What I did was to take the sustainability and safety goal that I had creatively combined and undid that. So they're now embedded in two of the other goals. And it feels better, actually. It gives them the right amount of focus in the goals, but it does acknowledge the work. So that seemed to, to make good sense to me. So if you look at, actually, I just read you right last. In terms of the district improvement goal under healthy learning environment, that now includes the safe and security part. And I mostly just referenced the district safety committee work there rather than spelling all the work that committee is, that I could do here. It made sense to do like I did with the sustainable group and just reference that work, which sits, sits in its own place, but at least notes the efforts to improve safety and security. And then the sustainable piece is similarly added on. Just find the right goal for you. In terms of, I must be looking right at it now that I, now that I need to say it out loud.
Is that within healthy learning?
Thank you, yes. Yes, it is within, I was trying to find it on my page. I won't do that. In, within healthy learning environments, safe, safety, and sustainable environments. If it magically disappeared, I will send you the version that happened.
I can't find it myself.
I can't either now, so I know it's on the line.
I know.
Was pretending to give you. I had so many versions, it couldn't be enough. So we'll make sure we get that too.
That's okay.
We tucked it into one of the other calls.
So for clarity, it will probably show up under healthy learning environment?
Yes. Sorry about that.
That's okay. And any other changes?
Not really. I, I read back through what else was here. It all felt like it fit within the major objectives, aligns with the strategic plan, aligns to the work being done at the schools and with the other building leaders and the central office leadership. So I really didn't make any other changes. I think that, that was the one that felt the most needing revision. Your feedback helps to determine that.
One thing that I knew, there was a piece of correspondence that was in my craw. When we were back, late today, we got.
Oh, right.
An email from Claire Abbott from DESI, who is our point person. We've joined the pilot program for the superintendent's rubric. So we actually, this was kind of surprising to me. I'm happy they're doing it. We do have a point person for any questions we have, if we want to, you know, run things by, by her. I will forward this email to everybody, so we all have it. Just came to the chairs and, but, so they're being very serious about this and actually providing opportunities for assistance, which is not what's happening.
And then it'll be up to taking this, assuming we approve this, it'll be up to us as a school committee and the chairs to lead it, to take these and really identify those rubric elements that we're focusing on. Because as we all know, it's a rubric of many different elements. And we need to take the goals and objectives that we have all agreed on and tie them to those few relevant, relevant rubric elements. And we'll use that for the evaluation of the year.
And the way you have called those out for us makes that task considerably easier.
Yep, and I know, Eva, you brought to me a suggestion and some questions around how do we track all of this throughout the year? And I think to some extent, one thing that we talked about to some extent, every time Laurie brings us a superintendent's report, it's generally focused in the, the buckets of the goals and objectives that she has, which for me is very helpful. And if we want to talk further about, you know, how we track that and collect evidence as the year goes on, we can, we can talk more about that too.
Sure.
If it's, you know, if it's something that helps to.
Feedback and guidance is helpful.
Keep, keep filling the buckets as we go so that you don't have to get to the end of the year and say, here's all the stuff that I've done.
Sure.
Yes, maybe, maybe to take a little bit of work off your table, I, I volunteer to take down the evidence and collect that information as we go through the, through the year. Just so we, you know, when we sit down to look at evaluation at the six months or at the end, or even as we are going through our goals, we can see, okay, are, you know, how much work is getting done here? Do we, you know, where, what can we provide to the community to communicate better to all the stakeholders?
Thank you. That's a, that's a great offer.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And I think if we can sit down and kind of create a process for that, it, it's a great idea. It's something that if we can then validate that process and make it something that we use ongoing, it's fabulous to have all the tears to do it at first. And then if we can make it something that's sustainable, then we, you know, try to make sure that it happens every year. If that makes sense.
Absolutely.
So let's sit down and talk about that, how to do that. That would be great. Thank you, Eva. I'm great with that.
Is there, you have an interim? Is there?
He has underneath.
Is there an interim, mid-year?
Yes, January.
In fact, you use the language formative and substantive.
Which aligns with the work we do with the staff and the administrators, formative and substantive.
And the rubric calls for the six, the six months review.
It's really helpful in both for me to go back and do that self-reflection, but I think also to, as a group, look at, are the goals going the way we thought they were going to? Do we, do we need to make any tweaks? If we can work on the data collection along the way, that's going to be really valuable to help track that, so.
And keeps us all educated. So if we have questions coming from the community, we actually have information out from fingertips because these meetings are, you know, these presentations are lengthy and there's a lot of information that comes through, through our hands. And it's hard to remember, so having a one designated area where we can access it will be helpful, but.
Yes, good, absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be terrific. So good, why don't we, in, in terms of next steps, just so we can establish it. If that's something that you want to kind of take the lead on, that would be great. And, you know, look to us in terms of guidance, reference, questions, whatever it may be. And I'm happy to help provide any insight on that.
That would be great.
Okay, great. Thank you. Very perfect.
Any questions, comments?
Other questions and comments on this, on the goals, on the process? Pretty good? Thank you for.
Thank you.
No, thank you. It's been a really consecutive dialogue.
Good.
So moving along to school committee goals.
Okay, so school committee goals. I apologize, so I sent them out to everybody here. I apologize that in that email, I asked Aaron to post them and then hadn't actually copied her on the email. So surprisingly not, they need to be posted until today, but they're up here in front of us. So what I have here that I've sent is the school, whoops, sorry, I put other things in front of it. Now I have to find my own version of it. It is the goals as of our last discussion, when we discussed them on September twenty-fourth. We had brought something then. I took notes on everybody's comments, combined it into this document and sent it all out to you a few days later. So this is, I'm presuming, pretty close to final. And the goal tonight is to look through this, see if there are any minor changes and further edits, but then finalize this tonight and we have confirmed our goals. So any thoughts immediately on these, as you see them in front of you?
Cynthia has to correct me if I'm wrong, but I actually thought, she brought it up, that civic education was not as a report desired, but, but is one of the areas of focus, wasn't it?
I, we went back and forth, I think.
Sorry?
We went back and forth, I believe.
Yeah, sorry, but.
It was, well, you know.
I think we did. My notes had it at the end.
I think it stayed in focus. I think that's right.
Yeah, I think this is correct.
No, Yuval is correct.
Oh, I, I had it in.
I think Yuval's.
I'd have to go back and watch the tape.
I don't know, I don't, I'm not, I'm only going by my handwritten notes, but.
I'm actually.
It moved, it was in the focus area, it wasn't.
So I think we can open it to discussion. But I thought that civic education was looked at as, when we spoke areas of focus, we used your framework of lens.
Of a lens, right.
And, and I think that civic education fell into the lens, something that we want to actually use in every other thing that we do, which means the superintendent does not.
I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter what everyone was saying.
I don't disagree with you.
No, I don't disagree with you. I'm trying to remember.
What does that even mean?
So this is a very different way of presenting goals than what we just saw from our superintendent.
Right.
Entirely differently.
Right.
And this is not intended to be self-limiting, nor is yours. We deal with what we believe we need to deal with. But the way this was put together was a guiding document where yearly responsibilities, first heading, suggests what are the inescapables that are very important. The second one, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty goals, that is more of a, let's call it, what are we going to, what are we going to project ties this year and do some work around as a school committee with some deliverables around them? The area of focus, as Yuval suggested, was characterized as the lens. These, these are important considerations where we're going to talk and listen and make decisions with these lenses. These are important considerations where we're going to talk and listen and make decisions with these lenses foremost. And what does that mean? Well, we'll know when we use these lenses, but it means that these are considerations that we want to be quite conscious of in our school committee processes. And then, correct me in a moment, let me just finish up, reports desired was, as I recall, Lori and team educate us around these in a special way this year. And housekeeping could be a projectized kind of thing as well, but it fell into its own category with with some some tasks like regional agreement inquiry, onboarding processes and so on. Do I have it largely right?
Yeah, I think that's a good thing, so let me use an example, because I want to get back to the question asked Yuval.
Yes.
We could take the action about school trips, and we could use the lens of inclusion, which we did, and we can debate that, so we've used the lens. I'm just wondering how the lens of civic education works.
When you plan, first of all, if we still will be in the future guided by the existing policy that says that trips should have considerable education value, and we speak about a trip to Washington. So we can actually debate whether taking a photo in front of the Senate House is good enough, or we want to speak about civic education, include something a little more substantial. This is what I'm actually.
I mean, I I get that, but I don't consider that a lens, I think now we're starting to dip a toe into actually pedagogy, trying to tell the staff what they should be teaching, I mean civics, inclusion, I mean, inclusion, equity, well-being, say, you know, a lot of the stuff we talk about. Clearly, I think lens is a good term. So we could say, well, we went the lens of ancient Greek history, we want to look at everything the way the Greeks did. That's not really for us to say, right, or or a scientific lens, I mean, I don't I think it's, that's why I don't understand how that is applied, I don't push.
Understand, I I I at the end of the day, I think if I remember like you, that was where Cynthia said she wants to go, but I don't have a, I I really don't have a.
How do you get in there?
Okay.
I don't have a standard.
I don't think getting here under reports desired.
How do you have those words show us?
Well, I feel very strongly that that our two districts should be leaders in in nationwide leaders in providing examples of of out of the box kind of civics education, not, of course, we will follow the curriculum, deliver incredible curriculum, but I think something a little bit more than that, and I think there's a tremendous community resources in our town, in Carlisle, in Boston, in Cambridge, et cetera, Lexington, to pursue, you know, do maybe a little bit more.
Well, that could be a lens.
So I think I feel like that's that's something that we could learn more about, I don't think it's as broad as a lens, I think something like
No.
social emotional well-being and inclusion or something that you need to consider in every topic that you're talking about, right?
Yeah, I think.
Civics education is a topic in and of itself, and it may be an important one, but I don't think it's something you have to consider in everything you're doing necessarily, so I don't see it as a lens. I see it as a topic for discussion.
Uncomfortable with this.
Yeah, you're comfortable with where it is, you were just telling us why it came up, I understand.
Either way, it gets attention, and either way, it's about this idea of how what we do enables students to be more capable as participants in the world they're entering into.
Exactly.
I'm going very general here, but that's what it is.
That's. We could have small C civics, it's sort of a, you know, that's that's.
We're gonna pay attention to it.
So.
From a from a process standpoint, I'll just use cultural proficiency as an example. We took on cultural proficiency more as a goal, we did a lot of work ourselves. We asked work to be done in the district, we had presentations. And we've done that, and now it's a lens, because we know
Yes.
where we are. So if you remember sort of the the desire to just have an understanding of, you know, what are we doing currently that would be considered civics education? In the form of a report and presentation, and I turn to you and say, is that something that we could see before the end of the year from?
Yeah, I think the the place we would certainly start would be curriculum-based.
Yep.
Absolutely. The vision of what somewhat here being described hasn't been developed at this point, and I think that I just want to say that right up front, I don't want to say that we're gonna tell you we're the leading place in the nation at this point. No, 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 but I'm saying. We're compliant, and we're ahead of our head of our state requirements, and is there room to grow? Absolutely. No, 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 I'm just saying. Right, but it's also in terms of our role in the community, right? Reaching out to other people, you know, trying.
To go for us.
Yes.
I think for us.
That's why I don't think it's necessarily.
Well, I just mentioned, if we can insert ourselves into the select board's governance seminars, we put in a part wisdom, I mean, that's, you know, worthy.
So I think the way I I would look at this is, I think we we would benefit from an understanding of where we are.
Right.
And then, you know, probably for next year's committee, should want to consider it as a as a goal, as a determination of, does the committee have a desire to try to direct more?
Right, exactly.
And what they'll look like, and and then, you know, that becomes a collaborative process with administration and around pedagogy and and inclusion of various things, but we're gonna sort of start with where we are.
Oh yeah, I I don't intend this to be work.
Right, right, it's just a where our things are.
But I think it brings up, I think actually this brings up to me two very interesting points, I hadn't thought about it before, right? One is, well, I thought of pieces of them, but not quite in this way. One is the multi-year, what should be, I mean, strategic planning in any organization is a multi-year process. You have a vision, and then you track to that vision, and you adjust. And with an elected body, you know, we have change every year, and so there's really no, I'd say statutory, there's no compliance that says you have to adapt. You have to take the goals of the previous year and adapt them, so that we can lead, if we don't monitor it properly, to the upward engine style of steering, right? And I don't, that's not a good process, so since we're running a large, running, but since we're the overseers of a larger organization, we should try for multi-year, and future school committees don't have to listen to us, but doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. So I kind of like what Wally was saying, in in thought process, like if we were to establish, say, civics as an area that we wanted to have some focus, it's not right to say, well, can we have something by the end of this year, what we're saying is let's start steering to that goal. You know, let's work for a year or so to develop a process, or come back with a plan for what a curriculum might look, or how you might change it. And then next year, it can become a report or whatever, and then in year three, it might be a lens, because by then, to your point, reviewing things through the eyes of that thing, I mean we we didn't approach that, we're edging towards that, and I, we've never in my school committee, haven't we done it that way, but actually, it's probably not a bad way to like look at those.
I like the way you outline the process, I would just step in and say, I don't think we're to the point of deciding as a committee whether this is going to be something that we're going to ask for work on next year and as a lens in the future. I think the first step is a very simple base level
Yes.
re- report of, here's what we're doing now. And from there, then we can decide as a school committee and an administration, is this something we want to do more on? Is it not? But I think we we shouldn't be talking about, is this a long-term goal right now, because we don't have the information to have that specifically.
Well, okay, so let's let's build on that, so it may be, you know, that we want to put better, I don't mean better, it's okay, but we want to put more process formulation to this exercise for the future. This is fine the way it's written, but we could say, in the future as a guidance, we have certain exploratory subjects that we want information on. We have things we've already decided we do want to focus on, and then we have things that we focused on that now we want to institutionalize as part of our, you know, I mean, to put in some notion of sequencing it, so that when subsequent committees pick it up, they have that.
Almost a filter, so that a new committee doesn't come in and say, great, here are three new goals that we're adding to the list this year. I mean, I understand the filter process.
Actually, thinking about what Cynthia just said, and continuing on the model that they did model for us. I think I think that the problem is the title areas of focus. I think that should be instead of areas of focus, I think it's a lens or a mission statement. You know, at the end of the day, one of the tasks that I think we're gonna have, the subcommittee, policy subcommittee, and this committee later is to redefine the mission statement in our policy, because it's very old. You know, those things are are our, we're not cultural proficiency is not something that we tell the teachers to, it's not curriculum, it's it's our I believe, it's our mission statement, we think that these are extremely important things that should guide every process in the district. So we say cultural proficiency, we say that we want to concentrate anything around social emotional well-being, about inclusion. Civic education in today's reality in the United States might really belong in our mission statement. Especially because of where we stand in the political discourse, so examples and doing things right. I think it belongs in the mission statement of the district, I think it belongs of being the lens, but.
Okay.
The only thing I suggested.
Can I just clarify, we have a mission statement in our values, right?
A mission, a core values.
Which includes caring citizenship and some other things, we can spend some time on that at another meeting.
Yep, yep. Yeah.
So I just want to be sure we're not
That's what I was about to say, yeah, I I I am, I think you're right, maybe we can rename this.
Missing that.
Mission statement probably isn't the right phrase, because we already have one. I like your idea, what, I mean, maybe we call it something like lens for awareness, or areas of awareness. So maybe we ring in, so that was one thing, though, I agree that maybe we can give it a better name. I disagree that civic education should go into it right now, because I think we need to understand it better first.
Yeah.
And I'm feeling like that's the general consensus.
I'd be very happy to
But.
hear from Lori, what do the frameworks tell us, what does our curriculum tell us in an explicit way? What does our curriculum tell us in an implicit way that's embedded in your opinion? And what do teachers talk about when they talk about civic education? That'd be a great starting place for us, before we decide what to do with it next.
Yes. Exactly.
Okay, all right, so I'm renaming that areas of awareness, only because lens doesn't fit in grammatically very well.
Yeah, what you're saying is, we're going to be tuned into this.
It's just, it's what we're aware of, right.
What we do, this is a pretty imprecise terminology, but but we know what we mean, I think.
Right. Yep. Right, okay, so areas of awareness. I'm gonna leave civics education where it is for now, because I feel like that's the general consensus here. I'm gonna throw one other thing out, and I don't want to make this a long discussion, but I do think we need to be aware of how much we're putting on this list. Aware of the need to then focus on these things and not a lot of other things that come in, but also aware of how much we're asking here, and it's under reports desired that I'm focusing mostly. It's already almost November, and for us to ask for one, two, three, four, five, six different reports in the next six months, really, seven months might be a lot, and so I want to kind of do a reality check here on are these things that, well, let me just finish quickly.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, are some of them things that we're gonna hear about anyway, and therefore it's easy to keep them on?
Right.
Are they all high priority, in which case maybe we do, but I want to just throw that out for a reality check here.
So honestly, I think that what happened with those is these are leftovers from other things that we bundled into here. The STEM, there was an open house, and many of us had been there, and we got to know it, and I think that we all, I think I am well informed, special education we get as we go all the time, both from Eva and from the superintendent as things go. Elementary Spanish is leftover, and it'd be nice maybe to know about it in the Concord School Committee, it's a you know, Q five, we had a presentation in from Principal Mastrol during the school improvement plan. Altogether, we left with civic education and RTI.
Okay, so.
For me.
RTI as all the improvement.
Can I, just a quick comment, I would argue that the special education actually needs its own, but needs its own spot, as there is a you know, group of parents that it's such a small, you know, it's not a general education where there always will be a lot of attention spent in in the large picture presentation, so I I want to make sure that we do focus on this group when we are talking about this particular group of students, that we give them the right time and attention, so I would not move that off of our table of metrics, it's a big thing, thank you.
Well, and I think this could be good year to do that, given that we have, Ruby having started this year, maybe towards the end of the year, we invite her in to tell us about, you know, her first year and what's going on in special education.
About so much changes.
Right, so I think that's realistic.
One thing, I mean, we're adding on here, but this came up, this is coming up in Carlisle, so I have a particular reason to want to say this, but Carlisle just completed the West Ed report, and so now we're grappling with a response and the action plan. You guys are a year ahead of us from that, so specifically in that, one thing I'm interested in, and I have to say, I haven't read your report yet, but what what actions came as a result of the West Ed report, and I realized Ruthie came in post-post, right, because you had a year without it, but it would be useful to kind of have that as a guidance. I think for you guys as well, because the report came out, and maybe you already know what was done, but I just.
So. Yeah, and we're.
And it's very helpful for us.
We've been doing that, we've had at least two presentations on the West Ed reports and the
I did, I think, yeah.
action plans, but we should always be updating you on those, yeah.
And I mean, we can separately go and see Ruth or you to get guidance for for us, because I think we need that guidance specifically for Carlisle school committee, you know, we we don't mean to tie everybody up on that piece, but that's something that.
Yeah, I meant with Jim too.
Okay, so just a.
Sure, is the board reports, is it on board, is it reporting, or should it be informational updates?
Updates desired, we could do that.
Something like that, I mean.
Is it a superintendent report?
Because report has a thing of.
Purpose report.
Right, we're not looking for a big formalized report or something.
Right. Right, that, I think, tonight I hear a lot of clarity that.
No binders required.
No.
Yeah, 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 okay.
It's small, it's kind of, we're trying to move things.
So, I like it, we'll call it updates, updates desired, and if that's the case, and to your point, Yuval, what you were just saying, some of this maybe we've covered already in the course of what we're doing, RTI has been mostly covered in the school improvement plan.
It's highly embedded in the.
Yes.
Do we all feel comfortable not asking for another update on RTI?
Well, we should be getting an update at the end of the year.
We're gonna.
Which we will through the school improvement plan, so we don't think we need to have it separately.
Indeed.
That's true.
All right, I'm gonna take that off the list, STEAM. Yu Yuval, you said you feel like you've had enough, does everybody else feel like they?
So that's also embedded in the innovative pedagogic goals of both the district and mine goals, so I think you'll.
In the end, it is, right. We're gonna hear about it anyways.
We're gonna hear about it nonetheless.
Okay, so we can take.
I don't think it hurts to leave it on there, because that's all we're asking for, is that.
Okay, okay.
By here, by clarifying that we're not asking for a particular kind of formal report at a at a time.
Just that it's gonna be covered in something.
And number two, that we and Lori have confidence that these things return anyway in superintendent reporting, I think we can be comfortable with.
With them there, okay.
Just a quick question, does STEAM, does that also include art?
Yes, because it stemmed with art, A is for art.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, absolutely. Q five, I think we'll hear about.
Certainly.
For the Concord folks, Spanish, is that, you know, the elementary Spanish program and where it is, you're the one that brought that up, Cory.
Okay.
Is that something, and we can talk about what that looks like, certainly, an update at some point would be great, we can, we can talk about whether it's
Sure.
a two-minute update or a, you know, or a ten-minute update.
We want to curd it.
I'm not understand where it is.
For a lot of reasons, cultural competency, one of many, so sure.
Yeah. So, and we can talk about whether that's a separate report in a Concord meeting at some point, or a bullet point within school improvement plans and objectives.
Sure.
And civic education obviously there, okay, so then if these are, if if we've kind of clarified, these are things we want to be updated on throughout the course of the year, but it's not a separate big report
No.
that we're asking for in a school committee meeting, then I'm comfortable with these here, are you, Lori?
The takeaway I'm having is that special education would be the exception to that.
Yes, I think so, yeah, that it would be good to have a
Okay, but yes, okay.
That's the one that.
And then maybe after the discussion about civic education, it might be a little bit of a item.
And that one also, actually, I think it sounds like that might be worth a
Where are we going, what are the.
Just a, not a long, again, not a not a forward-looking
Not a formally.
complex thing, but this is where we are, this is what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big issue right now. Yeah, I mean, it's a big issue right now.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And I think we ought to, to your point, I don't know that we need to be plead nationally, but certainly need to be.
No, we would say.
Concord ask about it, Carlisle ask about it, that we're paying attention to it, and that we're getting it the the right amount of, but.
Yeah.
Yep.
We can't know that until we get baseline.
Okay, so it's a baseline update.
For me, there are two things, eh, you see, the reports desired, something to to do with the areas of awareness. We talked already in one of the first meetings of the year. I brought it up, but I thought there was a wide acceptance of the idea that we want a a presentation from Challenge Success. About the district, we talked about them coming and and comparing where we are standing after four years of challenges. As opposed to other districts, we talked about the eh question of involving parental community, the community not only doing it in school, which was the original idea. So I'm still very interested to have a Challenge Success representative presenting the district and Challenge Success after four years.
So we do have that, we have Challenge Success on here under our social emotional well-being lens.
As an area of awareness, actually, I, we've been speaking about inviting a Challenge Success.
In terms of an area of. You were talking about it.
Representative to give us a, you know, a where we stand as they see, not as we see from inside. But as they see it compared to what they do in other districts around us in Massachusetts. It'd be, I think it would be, you know, we're so involved in it, we say that it's an area of awareness, we hear. Internal reports, but we don't have the view of the foundation.
What H is which grades go to it?
Primarily middle and high school.
Which which all are grades or?
Yes.
Really?
It's a process.
So a student might do it four times in a high school time?
So Challenge Success isn't a program like that, it's a.
It's not a thing, it's.
I'm aware of it, but I'm saying they might have it four times in their high school time.
I don't know.
It's not an it that a student has, it's more of a.
They they mean it's not.
Sort of approach.
But it's a, it's these, I thought it's these one-day intense.
No, 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 that's what I, there is a, it's a whole program that school districts are actually trying to. Hire the 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 foundation to reduce stress on students, to increase well eh well-being, to. Involve the community and parents, to challenge the original idea of success is Yale and Harrell, you know, and to so.
Huh?
Yeah. So before we.
You didn't know the.
No, it just means like the last forty years, I'm like.
Alright.
That's fine, you're going with the parents' foot.
I get it in a regular way.
And it's and it's a whole process, and they do it in many, many districts around the country, but many districts around us.
Yeah.
And there is a representative, is a coordinating eh 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 coordinator to discuss, and I would like to hear, I hear what we say.
No, I agree with you, I agree.
I would like to hear what, how they see what's.
This is a local instructor.
Before we, well, hold on, that was gonna be my question, before we we kind of decide in a vacuum, we wanna bring them here. Can you give us a little more, Lori, on what our relationship with is with Challenge Success?
Sure.
Because I know we we hired them at one point and brought them in.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that we can just drag them back at any point.
No, no.
So how, what, can you give us a little insight on what this request would be?
Right, so we're still very much working under their umbrella and their their, you know, lanes of work to be done in districts that are trying to take on their approach. There's a pedagogy lane, there's, it's not just, everything's connected under Challenge Success, that our strategies and approaches to teaching and learning also.
Right.
Influence student health and wellness, along with the very directed health and wellness work, so it's it's all of that.
Right.
We've used different models of support from them, we've had consultants in the buildings, we've also actively used their workshop models, and we've. Followed their plan to create committees that then drive the offshoots of what targeted areas we're doing. It's kind of, Challenge Success is really a roadmap.
Yeah.
To all the different ways you can try to change your way of being for kids in schools, especially in our high performance schools. Uh, so we've used their roadmap extensively, you know, the ninth grade transition, the sixth grader, all of that's under Challenge Success's umbrella. I think the part I would say in terms of what you're considering right now, we would have to engage with them at a level of them getting to know what we're doing. And be able to then almost give you some sort of review of where we're at, and I don't even, I haven't heard of that kind of work from them, I can't say that I've asked. So we would have to reach out for them and put in an inquiry as to what you're asking.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get a feel for, because it isn't a simple request.
But but wait, 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 wait. One main thing that we discussed, I think, in the written presentation here, with Dorothy, is accountability. You know, at the end of the day, we take an outside source of, to create the roadmap for us. And then if we're just judging our, how we follow the roadmap from inside, there is.
We bring people here constantly to do that, but this is the direction you wanna go, I need to figure out.
I I think that for me. I I don't know, I actually think that at the end of the day, I think that this is one of the, we all decided, and the district decided. Social emotional well-being and Challenge Success is an area of focus, something extremely important for us. I I try to even understand why there is eh an objection to the idea of bringing them and hearing more and learning more. I mean, they did not know enough about it.
Can I, can I ju, can I just jump in here for one second? It sounds to me like we don't, we just don't know if this is something they're equipped to offer us, first of all.
Right.
They even do, right.
And if they.
Or how much it will cost us.
If they have an understand, if they're engaged enough with us to have an understanding of of us right now, to be able to come to us in the next. Couple of months to do that, and if, so I think we, I think we need to do a little investigation.
Mm-hmm.
Of just, you know, what's possible, and is it something that we can do? One, if they do it, is it something we can do this year, is it something that they need some sort of periodic update about what's going on, so they can develop?
Mm-hmm.
Eh, perspective to even be able to come in and do that.
So can we ask the superintendent to check with them and report in the next.
I can certainly do that.
They could, they could surprise us with excellent ideas about self-assessment that is critical.
There are ongoing self-assessments through Challenge Success, which is usually survey work, that we are actively looking to to re-update.
We have a charge.
I think we wanna be careful about, um, you know, we have. We have engaged and refunded the work that Challenge Success does here.
It's the same thing.
I think, you know, there's a point at which, you know, that leaves our plate and moves to. Uh, the the central and building administrators, us getting an update on what's going on, and, you know, our does that look, I think it's certainly worth seeing if we can do that. I wanna be careful about us being directive of.
Yes.
What's going on with the challenge, we're not boots on the ground.
Right, I think we, we still have it in whatever we're calling.
Our areas of awareness.
There we go, yeah, I think it's, it's, you know, um. We'll either talk about it at the next, when we get our school improvement plans, and it would be appropriate to, you know. See, do we need to have a check with the.
Well, I mean, a reach out, I think it's a good idea, I I imagine they're a business, right, so. You're a customer, you're a good customer, you've been a long-time customer, and I'm sure they have an engagement manager of some kind.
So they're nonprofit out of Stanford, so that would be where we.
Yeah.
No, they have a coordinator locally.
They have a big organization.
They do, I.
I'm not sure they can come out, because they would probably know us pretty well, is my guess.
I'll have to, I don't believe they know us well enough to do what you're asking, but.
It's my guess.
Yeah, why don't we just.
Right.
That doesn't mean they couldn't come and learn it, so.
I think you've got a sense of.
I I do.
Yeah, no, we just, we wanna.
Yes, and and I would just add that if we're asking for some information. Lori's gonna look into one potential way to do that. Another way could be to ask someone from the schools, from within us and the administration to come and tell us. Here are the pieces of the roadmap that we've adopted, and here's what we're doing under each of them, and here's what, right, I mean, that.
Yeah, they're not synchronized too, they're not mutually exclusive.
That's another way to do this.
Yeah.
It, so anyway, let's, let's leave this one for, we need a little more information before we ask anything.
There's there's two rules.
Yes.
That's the same.
And could I just add education, because I I feel like a lot of people don't, are not aware of what Challenge Success is. So they might not be necessarily hoping you have new kids coming into the school, they might not be even aware that of all the changes that have been done. Uh, to how our students are transitioning uh to ninth grade, for example. So, um, maybe, and and I've seen education on part of the superintendent going out about uh supporting students and. About inciting our students and uh other readings that parents can do um to better support their their kids and not put the unnecessary pressure.
Okay, so that's that's part of the.
There's a whole section on the Challenge Success.
Yeah, yeah.
The other, the other thing I think is for me missing in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty goals or to-do list. Is of course the question of the big picture and revising everything regarding travel and trips that we said. Will count as a, something that this year should revise.
You should happen, okay?
So that's.
So is that, and it's something we've talked about doing during, to to your point, Yuval, as we've talked about trips and approvals, we have multiple times said, let's focus on the. At the nineteen, twenty trips as one process that we need to get through right now, and. Forward-looking trips as another process that we need to.
So that's a go, I think it's a goal for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, was discussed repeatedly.
Would that be under the policy?
No, it's not, it's policies, no, because policy is only, for me, eh, policy is only one of the many questions, because there is the.
Our policies are gonna be.
Question of eh access and equitable access and its financing subsidies, it's not policy. How it's, it starts, we, but it's, we don't have a policy. And then there's a question of whether we insist on educational value or not. So there was, there are many, many parts to this eh question that we discussed here many times, that we bring after the approval of the, after we.
So could it be a report?
Get those trips underway or not.
So could it be a report desired, because we obviously could have talked about it next meeting, where I'm sure we'll be having a number of.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable, I'd be comfortable capturing anywhere, we know what's happening, so let's just capture it and and move on.
Revisionary reports. Right. Yes, so. Right.
Is it report, is it housekeeping, yeah, you could argue either very nicely.
Yes, third one.
I would almost say housekeeping, it's something we need to put together, we need to.
It's it's underway, it's not going right.
Adjust the process and capture that somehow, and it's something, and then it's on our to-do list.
Yeah. I think that's fair.
Does that make sense to everyone?
Sure.
Okay, so under housekeeping, I am adding um revise trip approval process.
And keeps it busy.
Hmm, no.
No.
It's not only done.
Well.
It's a. No, it doesn't, that's fine.
Okay.
What would you call?
I I wouldn't put revise, because we haven't directed anybody to revise anything.
Right, okay, review.
Review, thank you.
There you go.
Review trip approval process. Okay, Yuval, you know, would you like to suggest something different?
I'm getting eh very frustrated, as you know, my question is not only about the approval. We talked about using all the lens and areas of focus and actually sending a message to the administration and to the teacher of. How would we like to see the future of travel and international travel? So it's not only the approval process, it's not a question of process, it's a question of substance, it's a question of content, you know?
Okay, so I, so I saw that as coming through the approval process, but.
It's not, but if it comes, if it comes to ask for approval, and it includes things like considerable educational value, maybe we want to give some kind of guidance of what we believe. Should our grade district should offer our grade students.
So, to me, that's. Yep, to me, that's part of the approval process, because in order, before we are asking for information, we need to give guidance on what it is that we're looking for.
Mm-hmm.
It's part.
So to me, it's all, it's not just about, are we, are we stamping yes or no, it's. Let's be clear about what we're looking for and what the goals are, and communicate that information out.
Mm-hmm.
So that before submissions are brought to us, there's that understanding.
So we have initial approvals already underway, we're gonna tighten up the.
Correct.
For this year.
And 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 embellish, in the best sense of the word, I hope, the uh or expand the final approval.
Correct.
Information flow and uh learning that that we have at this end.
Oh, for this year's trips?
For for this year.
Which is separate, I wasn't even addressing that here.
And and that is going to inform the process, I think that Yuval speaks of, that is gonna eh by all rights be in place a year from now.
Right, and I think that Yuval's point is that in order for there to be a better process in place a year from now, we need to be working on it this year.
Exactly.
But as soon as we get this.
Correct.
I I guess to your point, do we need to add to housekeeping, finished trip approval process for this year?
Agreed, agreed.
Sure.
Yeah, because it's happening anyways.
Okay.
Alright.
And we're gonna be looking at something next week.
Approvals for two thousand twenty trips, right?
Right.
Okay.
I I just, you've all laid out something that I eloquently about. Uh, the way he thinks we ought to approach this, and um I I don't really necessarily agree with that. In the sense that what is our role and responsibility? Um, and I think if we're, you know, we're talking about goals and focus document, I think we need to understand where the committee is on this. From the standpoint of, eh, we we have identified that we. Clearly need to be, have a better alignment along the lines of our, of the law, the policy, the process. And what what the product is. And yes, we have the ability through that to identify some. Maybe the word lens has been used too much. You know, pathways as people are designed, the the notion of trip, we're not directing. The development and the operation of trips. That's being generated by faculty and administration at the building level based on desire and interest and need from the program. Uh, we've got many trips that we've been doing for a number of years. The. By designing what we are asking for in the process, coming to us for approval. Um, I think we can, we can identify that, you know, we wanna, we want to know what, you know, how you are thinking about this. From an educational uh benefit standpoint. And. But I'm not sure, in fact, my feeling is that we should not be dictating specific details about what we expect to see in. You know, the the type of trip or the the, you know, if you're gonna do a trip, it has to do these things.
I don't think. But I don't think we're all agreeing on that tonight, we're agreeing that we need to discuss this more.
Yeah.
Well, I tell you, I tell.
I think we all have very different opinions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I do, and I don't know that.
I agree with Cynthia that this is part of the this, the big discussion that we want to do later.
Part of the discussion.
Well, but I don't know that we do, that's my point.
So so.
I know you do, but I don't know if the committee wants to.
So let me answer this, so the M A C model policy is using the words. Education, that we should check educational value versus cost and other things. This district changed these words, we took the model and we changed it. And we added considerable, it's not in the model, considerable education value, so part of our approval process, unless you change the policy. Which is also a possibility, but as long as we leave civic education according to our guided policy. We have to vote on considerable education value versus cost and other things, equitability, access, everything that you've been talking about for years. Even we speak about considerable education value, and the superintendent asked us to give instruction that she can actually give to teachers. We should fill content into the word, the word in considerable education value. And this is, that's where I started this whole discussion, except for the equitability and access, I think that we both agree, because I actually was quoting you from the minutes. And plus eh.
Can I, can I try to wrap this up and say, I think if the point that we have under housekeeping is review trip approval process.
Yes.
I think that captures having this discussion then, and we can decide at that point.
I agree, Lori does.
And we can decide at that point what goes into that discussion.
Is it in the stuff, you've added it?
So I'm adding, I'll tell you in a second, I'm gonna highlight what I've added to this. Um, like, and I I think we're about done, there's just one other po- potential edit here I wanna point out that I think is just a correction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, someone mentioned policy, policy, under two thousand nineteen, twenty, the last one, we have conduct policy manual review, which is not quite accurate.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're not gonna review the entire manual this year.
No, no.
What we talked about was reviewing what the subcommittees is going to do and what the plans are there, so I think what we meant to say was conduct policy. So I think what we meant to say was conduct policy subcommittee review in terms of
Right.
review what that subcommittee is going to.
I think it's, it's, it's trivial, it's trivial because that's the state law actually asked us, so.
It's fine, but it's a, it's a trivia, it's trivial because that's the law, state law actually asked us, so.
I understand, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify that we're not gonna get through the whole manual this year.
Just like, I would say policy review, that should be every year.
Continue policy review, and it'll show up again next year.
Okay, if that's the case, we'll just put it under yearly responsibilities, but we.
Well, well, Scott, Scott, Scott. No. Uh, I've been on the policy review committee far too many years. I think one of the things we need to identify is what is the process we are going to do around policies? I don't think it's valuable for us to just assume that every year we're gonna have a policy subcommittee and we're gonna meet every month every three weeks, whatever it's gonna be, and take the time from committee members, administration to go through this. Unless, so, full stop on that, so if we're, if we're for an agreement that that doesn't need to be a, an ongoing process that we're constantly rolling through the policies to look for changes, then what, what, you know, is there a, is there a you know, once every three years we wanna undertake a full review, is there a once every five years with in the interim when M A S C eh makes suggested edits to their policies that we, to drive a lot of what we do? That, you know, we, we have a standing policy subcommittee, I'm not saying we don't do that, but that we have a standing policy subcommittee that many years is there to convene if there are changes to law, changes to eh policy language on a, on particular set of policies and that based on that, that would kick in a process for the policy subcommittee to then do work around those pieces.
Basically, some years, yeah.
Because what I've seen in six years is that we have just been rolling through the policies and to me.
So it's hoping the policy subcommittee is gonna come with recognition, that we might not do that, or maybe they would, because that's their work.
Well, we're. Right.
Right, so. So here, the, what I've written, what I've replaced it with is conduct policy subcommittee process review.
Well, let's think about where we are, where are we?
Yeah, and it's.
We are picking up where we left off in February, a long hiatus. We eh informed ourselves that we were going to eh continue to work through the manual to see if there were in fact eh policies that required attention and the very fact of looking at them is an educational process for us, so even if we don't touch something, I don't think it's eh poorly used time. But eh what we also I think made explicit was that eh the policy committee was leaning toward, I'll come back to that, leaning toward eh some form of alternating. Let's make sure we understand the policies in their entirety by working through them, that's eh housekeeping. Eh, and policy is one of our three big pillars as a school committee, so we can't say it's anything less than quite important. Eh, and then secondly, we were going to put to members of the school committee and Lori and her team, are there any that should be taken quote unquote out of order or attention? And eh, so eh I think we can eh very nicely continue on that. The reason I said we were leaning toward that is we didn't wanna make a definitive decision without eh Dave Modell in the room because he couldn't make the last policy meeting.
Sure.
Um, so I don't think we need a controversy on this one, I think we have a process and eh it takes some time, policy is laborious stuff. That's why M S, M A S C holds our hand with it. Uh, but eh I don't think it's time poorly spent.
No, it's worth it and I think to, just to summarize here, that's all stuff that it sounds like eh, maybe this process review is almost done, you guys are gonna get the, the policy subcommittee, or maybe it's not. My point is that we're not gonna have the debate now, the policy subcommittee will come back to the full committee with a recommendation on this and that's why it is under our goals
Right.
to eh have a subcommittee process review and then decide what the process will be going forward.
Right, I agree with that.
So I don't wanna have that debate right now.
Can I?
So I would suggest that I highlight our changes and that we finalize our goals, does that?
Can I, can I just?
Yeah.
Can we put the word process in conduct policy manual?
I, so I changed it to conduct policy subcommittee process review.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Okay, so and I'm just gonna highlight the changes now that we've made, we've just made basically four changes. So the first is changing what we just talked about, changing from policy manual review to under nineteen, twenty goals, conduct policy subcommittee process review.
I, I won't argue with that, other than to, other than to say.
Are you reviewing the process or are we reviewing the policy?
I don't say we are also reviewing policies.
Yes, and that's a year, that's a yearly responsibility that we all, that we always have.
Do you wanna? Fine.
I mean, this, with all due respect, I, I'm not trying after two meetings of the policy subcommittee to actually Wally's got six years and decided to, two, two meetings, but we have identified, Cynthia identified two totally missing policies. I think I found another two totally missing policies, it seems that eh, that the times are changing. When we have to do, you know, the question of the policy of vaping, that's a very simple change, but if we have a missing policy and we will agree, if we will agree it's a missing policy, that's already eh process that can be much more than one meeting, you know?
Oh, absolutely, I, this isn't to say it's one single meeting review, the, the.
I, I just don't understand where we're going.
Oh, okay, then, then let me clarify, because no, that's a good clarification debate. This does not say that we're only going to review the process and be done, there will always be policy eh changes and reviews that go on throughout the year by the policy subcommittee, things like if you've got things missing or things that have changed.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't understand what you're saying.
So that, it's, it's one of our ongoing responsibilities, we can never decide not to do it. So it is by default something that we will do, so we're not taking that out of our responsibilities. Okay, so again, the change is that a specific goal for this year in addition to that is conduct a review of the policy subcommittee process. The second change is instead of eh areas of focus, we're calling the next category areas of awareness. The third change is that instead of reports desired, we are calling the next category updates desired. And the fourth change is two additions to housekeeping, one being finished trip approvals for F Y twenty trips and the second being reviewed trip approval process. So those are the edits to the document as it was shared earlier. Is everybody comfortable finalizing that and then we're done discussing our goals and we can actually work on them?
Sure.
Well, we're working on them already.
We are working on them, I understand, I'm. Okay, um, do we need to, do we need to vote on these, what?
I can start those.
Yes.
You usually do not, personally do.
Oh, you usually do, we just don't.
Then let's do that, then I would.
Clean them up, send them out, we'll vote on them next week.
Let's do that, sounds good, I will send you a new, send you a new version, okay?
It's cleaner if you put it on the agenda.
Just put it in the book, just with the action.
Action items.
Exactly, just go to action items with the finalized document.
There you go.
It's a clean document, a clean.
Woo, right, exactly.
Okay.
Beautiful, we got through that one.
Moving on to.
Next, on to capital articles.
Regional capital articles.
You lead this one.
Um, do you wanna, I mean, how do you wanna?
Sure, I, I know we shared a lot of documents with everyone in an attempt to get everyone on the same page. So hopefully that historic eh work has helped, helped you to be there for tonight. Um, coming out of that work, where we left off last week and then decided to give everybody time to read and eh come in informed is the decision about a capital article or articles eh that we may propose to the communities in order to keep the work going that we've been talking about for a couple of years now, so we remind you with the Gail eh drawing that's here on the screen. The discussion for last town meeting was to pave the road in front of B and to add parking. We heard last week the request to consider whether we could widen that road, Jared's working on that, we don't have enough data set of information in that, since last week, um, to see if that's an option.
What, what's wrong?
The request last week of the committee was to can, to add an option that we hadn't considered in the past, to put parking.
Across from the B.
Across from B and make it one way, most likely. Uh, we're, we're trying to get more information on that. So we're trying to be sure we're utilizing all the time between now and the Warren, it was being due to discuss the ebbs and flows here of this. We've got quite a bit of information at our fingertips from both committee work and professionals we've brought in. We've got the experience of town meeting last year. In Concord, I think we've had, we were, we were in Carlisle a lot presenting, so we know we have feedback more anecdotally from, from Carlisle in terms of its mindset. And I felt the need, and I think the chairs agreed that we don't wanna have this become a one or two week discussion and the history of Warren articles in my time here has been, it's much more when we're under the gun, it's a much harder conversation, so. So we're bringing it back for tonight now that everyone's coming in, hopefully eh feeling more informed and I think we take it from there as to what our options are and what we might consider going forward.
I would throw out there first, um, Lori shared all of these documents with everyone, for those who are not here living through the process for the past couple of years, are there questions on what went out? I mean, I don't, we're not gonna take time.
What went out last year or what, what do you mean?
On the documents that were shared with everyone.
I think it's just any questions based on the information that you might have reviewed between last week and this week.
Any questions?
You mean like, what we're gonna, what the options are?
As in what the options are, I mean, we, we weren't gonna present all of the various presentations.
Yeah, I mean.
I'll ask a big, I'll ask a big general one.
Maybe if you wanna just give a very brief history of.
Ooh.
It's a very, very brief history because.
Well, I, I don't mind doing that because I kind of expected that we would P S to do that, so. And, you know, most of this is in the materials that we're done last week and that I sent out to earlier, they were links. So I, I just encourage people to, you know, to, to review those because, you know, we have done as a committee and, you know, I, I tend to think of the committee as a continuation of each year and, you know, we we have many things that rely on past information um, and I think it's our responsibility to, to understand where that is, especially, we've spent a fair amount of money to date on eh the campus oversight, subcommittee and eh, might have been advisory committee actually.
Campus advisory before that.
So we've done a lot of work um in identifying eh or what we might be able to do with the limited space left on the campus, uh, because we're, we're built up. What, what was the sort of precursor event to us even doing the oversight committee and the depth we did was that we we did remediation and cover of an old landfill, which is under here. This was at one time a burn pit way, a long time ago, and it's got hazardous waste in it and there and everything flows downhill. The Hugarkill, Pugharkill well is down here for the community. So this is, I think it's called a level two um water zone and it's very highly regulated as to what runs off it which dictates everything we do on the campus. So that had been done, it's capped, it's got an impervious cap on it, can't, you know, piercing it is a big deal. You can't just dig a hole and put a light bulb in it. Um, you have to, if you, if you pierce it, uh, there may be some excavation necessary of eh, of hazardous material and then you've gotta make sure that when you're done, whatever you pierced it for is also an impervious because we don't want water running through there into that hazardous material and then leaching down there. So we, we formed a committee and we looked at a number of different things about you know, basically all of these things that are high, are in red boxes were things that were considered. Um, but we also, there was discussion about a field house, there was discussion about leaving it as just, you know, open space. There was discussion about hockey rink, um, there, and there was discussion about eh a track. None of these are things that, that we are proposing presenting to the community to fund at this time. We just wanted to get a sense of what could be done in that amount of space so that we could be thinking about it, the community could be thinking about it. One of the things that got identified in the process of this is that, you know, our, our track and field situation is suboptimal. We use the field down at Emerson, um, it's, it's a fine facility, it's been re, resurfaced and and for what it is, it's fine, a lot of, I think, I think, uh, Concord Academy and Middlesex.
Five schools, five.
Five different schools use that track. It doesn't, you can't have any throwing events down there um by order of the community, so, because it is a community space. And so that presents challenges when you're trying to practice in old events, it's eh you can't have everybody in one place, it also presents challenges for coaching and it prevents challenges for safety. Some of those things led us kind of down this road that, you know, for these purposes we would put a track there, we talked about size and location. And one of the things about a track is it doesn't have to, depending upon what you do for lighting, doesn't have to do anything in the way of the s- the underling, um, you can put it on top. So that's kind of where we are, we in the process became very aware of the severe parking problem. When we rebuilt, when, in the old building, people parked anywhere they could put their car and not be in the way of a bus. And eh, and all of that was parked, a lot of, a big part of that was parked. That went away in the building. And eh, we didn't add the same number of spaces that, that we had. Theoretically, we added the same number of um.
Legal spaces, official spaces.
Legal.
Yeah, official spaces, that own legal's the right word, um, but, you know, identified and cataloged spaces. But it wasn't, it's not enough. We knew it wasn't enough when we built it and we just sort of went about our business doing what we could do. All of this dictated primarily by that water district issue and the, you know, the, the zone we're in. You can only have so much um impervious surface and we're, we, we already operate on a variance from what would be allowed in that space. So we have done some things eh up here eh in this field in the back of the building, eh there are spaces for throwing events. The eh, but we, we have looked at where we might be able to put parking and where it boils down to. One of the things we looked at three years ago, were you here? When we talked about the gravel?
Oh, yeah, oh, that was Lori.
It was in Europe.
Two years ago.
It's two years ago, I think, we looked at, over here, we talked about doing some sort of gravel. Because, you know, what do we know, we think that's impervious, well, it turns out it's not considered impervious, so. And the maintenance of it is challenging because you gotta plow snow and it's gravel and then you put the gravel over it. So we kind of scratched that idea, we came back with the notion that, you know, we, what about building a parking lot? And eh, we were in agreement across the board that that was an appropriate way to present this to the community, we talked about doing it as two separate Warren, the, the road needs to be repaid, I mean, we knew that all along. It's had construction vehicles on it for the last ten years and um, the eh, whatever, kind of been working on this. So it's time to repay it, but we looked at it as two separate Warren articles last year. We looked at it as a single Warren article and we chose as a committee to go to town meeting as a single Warren article, um, to do them all. We believe there, we believe there are valid reasons for that in that, you know, there will be eh, if you just do the road and then somewhere down the road decide to the parking lot, eh you may have to dig the road up for drainage purposes, um, you will have heavy equipment running across the road. We view the eh, I think the way I've described it and I didn't get any pushback from anybody on this. If we were, we talked a lot about stra. talked a lot about stress, parking is a major stress issue at the, at the high school. One of the few things we can do from here that could have a meaningful impact on student stress is to get more parking. And so, we viewed it as an important enough aspect that we wanted to bundle it all together, because we think, for all of those reasons, that was the appropriate way to do it. It failed, not by a lot here, it probably, and it never went to Carlisle. The, the feeling is that the joint article would have failed there. And we put a lot of effort into, into making the public aware of what was going on. Last year was a very busy year for outreach, coming into town meeting between that and the middle school. Tucked up most of the time of all seven members relative to school community stuff, and had a lot of time from the administration. So, it's kind of where we are, we don't, you know, we didn't get funding for a new road, we didn't get funding for a parking lot.
Very helpful, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
So, on that chart, the, the purple line, or the kind of white, that parking lot doesn't exist now, the one down below the racetrack, you will have-
That's no, that's what we were asking for.
You're asking for that, and is that partly in the impermeability zone and partly out?
No, this, yes, so, um, let me see, this is the contamination zone.
Pink is contaminated, but you can build a-
This is the old, this is the old parking lot.
Right, but, I mean, the part you wanted to focus on right now is that, and that's partly in the zone and partly out.
So, part of this is gonna be, we, we are definitely gonna have to be aware in the design of the, of the cap.
Or you could just circumvent it, it looks like you get most of the parking around the cap, but it doesn't really matter, it's right, you're allowed to easily-
You can go over the cap.
Well, there's, with me, there's one thing that's not mentioned, that was part of the campus oversight thing, and then we think we've actually done some work on, this area was sort of identified as a place for an outdoor classroom. And here, this is a swell.
No, but, yeah, okay, so you don't want to mess with that.
Fifteen feet or something from the other way.
Right, what about the, the grassy area up?
Here?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a drainage, into a canyon.
You can't do anything with that, okay.
And we did look into using the border, another thing we looked at last year was using that, I'm not tall enough, but that skinny border that looks like there's a little space maybe that-
Well, and that's really what I'm talking about with the one-
And not, right, even that you couldn't get enough of there.
What do we have to do to make a one lane rather than-
And then finally, the height issue, so, the parking lot needs to be higher than the road, I presume, because you drain through the road, or does it?
I don't know.
I mean, you, you brought up a point that if you, if you separate the two articles, if one did that-
Oh.
And you built one, whichever one you built, and then you didn't build the other one for a while, you might not be matched, I presume, it's height, because of drainage.
It's as much matched as, the, the road we're talking about is here.
Yes.
So, if you're doing construction here, that, because it slopes downward that way, you're naturally going to drain through it, it's just a matter of fact that-
If hypothetically, you said, you gotta do parking, and we'll deal with that later, you just gotta make sure you build it high enough, that when you do the road, it still drains that direction, I guess, really.
Well, yeah.
I think so, and that, that's all part of it, the design is all part of making sure, the design, I think, to your, the question of one versus the other, I think parking, parking could be done before the road more easily than the road before parking.
One of the things, one of the, on the, on the drainage piece, one of the things we are not fully aware of is, or what we don't have a design for.
That's right.
What we don't have a design for is what the drainage for that parking lot would entail, we have a sense, and, but part of what we were asking for, for funding in the warrant article was design, so, you know, that will be, you know, I don't know that the drainage of that has anything to do with the height of the ring road, the ring road is lower, just topographically than, than the parking lot, and it's not, I mean, and actually, I think, we don't want it to drain down to the road.
You'd have to, I mean, you would normally, anyone you- Engineering drawings and site review and planning board, so, I think, you know-
And the NRC, it's, it's because they, they are the ones who dictate the impervious surface.
NRC, was there nuclear waste, nuclear regulatory?
Natural resources provision.
Why aren't you in NRC?
Totally.
Well, just correcting from Roman, if I read where they gave a report, there was three options, in each one of them, they actually gave the percentage that would be over the fifteen percent, and we have to go to the town. All the options were between twenty and twenty-one, but that included an option for the track, and the, the options were the track, the rink, and everything, so if we start only with the parking lot, I think it's safe to believe that it would be much lower percentage of the fifteen, and it will pass, that does not seem to be-
I think you're mixing money with regulatory, you know.
No, 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 not money at all.
Impervious surface.
But that's not an issue, right, there's a money issue?
No, 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 impervious, you, you're allowed to actually use only fifteen percent, in the three models, they go to twenty to twenty-one, but that included already other structures, so if you do, you start with only the parking lot, we're quite safe around the impervious.
Here's a, yeah, I think here's the, here's the, there's a chicken and egg thing here. The NRC isn't gonna approve, based on what we know, any variance changes, they will need a design. So, we need to fund a design that we can then present for approval from the NRC and the-
The EBA are done.
To, I don't even know if the planning board is, any jurisdiction there, to speak of, it's the NRC.
On EBA, you're a lot, I was an NRC member, and I am now on the finance committee. Just to clarify, the planning board is the one that controls the, the over, the overlay of the warrant. The NRC does not, would not be the one approving of, you know, any expansion of the percentage of the purpose, that's a planning board issue, the NRC would look at, where does the drainage go, where does the water flowing to? The constraints on the lot are that if you create more impervious, you need to contain all the runoff on the lot, you cannot push more runoff into a ferryland park, there's already so much groundwater, but you can't push more, so.
That's good, and that's, it's not at all complicated.
That was a really nice simple description of that.
So, we, so I think we need to, you know, in order to say, we need to, we need a plan to get approved before we could build, and we need the money to do the plan, which is part of the overall funding of last year's warrant article. And, so, that's kind of where we are.
I think though, let me just, I think though, Yuval's question, correct me if I'm wrong, okay, is more that if we submit a plan, it's just the parking lot, but not the track, then it would be easier to get that planning board approval, right?
Because we would be, we would be in very low percentage over the fifteen.
But I think not, if I remember correctly, the most, if not all of the impervious surface that we were talking about was in the parking lot, that the track actually did not create more impervious surface, because it's all over the existing cap, so that didn't change anything, the impervious that we're adding is the parking lot.
So, I actually, I actually had a-
I think Cora had a question like, what about that?
Sorry, just with a little bit, with a little bit saved for a lower field facility, that also is in the calculations.
Sorry, a little bit of what saved for what?
A little bit of impervious surface available.
Yes, exactly.
That's been sort of held out.
Yes, exactly.
That's this, yeah.
Right.
So that's in the calculations.
Yeah. Yes.
And the calculations, in short, were we to build out, would take us up to the old high school variance effect.
Right, exactly.
Can I ask a one little question? The shed, so, a couple of things we lost, right, during the CCA play project where the shed, and what we were just talking about, the concessions and more really, the bathrooms.
Right.
So, we have everything back except for this.
We've revisited the shed a couple of times, because CCA play actually has funds, without approaching again, we're trying to, the hope was we could do it within the as builds of the project at this point, and have enough impervious surface left to not need a whole nother permitting process.
Okay.
We did not, we, I don't know, I was in a lot of conversations with CCA play at the table, so at that point, it's we, met with the director, NRC, and planning, and we just didn't accomplish that, even though the numbers seemed to work.
Okay.
So, that's been sort of left in limbo, okay, just say it simply.
So, I actually had a question, where was the area that you had mentioned earlier, that you were thinking about just putting gravel, because there are new materials that are set up specifically to allow drainage right through. And I brought, incidentally, I, I came across these products, and it was, it was interesting, but they're actually papers that allow the water to sneak through, right through to the ground, that you're not pushing that water down the, down the street or, you don't have that.
So, the feedback we got on that, any, any pervious surfaces, was that the oils from the cars would go into the water supply, so we've really been denied gravel from both directions at this point, I can't say if you want to revisit that again, but that was the feedback we got.
Oils from the car, which you're listening to?
Electric.
So, it's a, it's a question of car pollution?
At the time, we proposed it, which was almost two years ago now, and the throes of desperate, could we do something quickly before we had all this work done, we had proposed putting gravel down, really kind of along where the track is now, along the BD road on the way in, because we had just finished the landfill cap, so we knew we had some space there, or just adjacent to it as well, and then, just in the anecdotal requests to the town boards, the answer was that that would be a viable option, so, I'll leave it, I'll leave it there, we never did any formal proposal, it was a,
Right.
it was an inquiry, and that was the response.
Any other questions about how do we get to where we are?
So, do we have a proposal?
Yeah, where do we go?
I think we're faced, we're, we're sort of where we were last year, with the exception of this idea that, you know, we'll, we'll see if we could do something in front of the BD center that would get us some parking.
So, would that option be some parking and fix the road and no other parking for now?
Well, it's, we'd have to decide that, it won't be a hundred and twenty-five spaces, so it won't totally ameliorate the problem, but it is better than nothing, is sort of the approach, but that doesn't mean that we can't, I mean, we can, we can look at any number of options, and I think it's, you know, I hope it's clear, it's, you know, it's the ring road and a hundred and twenty-five lot, space lot, it's, and, and some machination of both, or one or the other, and it's a change to the configuration of the ring road, potentially, we don't even know if that's possible. And that's really sort of, that's our, that's our choice.
Yeah, I have no idea about Concord politics, I have some idea, but I have no specific knowledge of this situation played in Concord, although, I take it, it was a mix of environmental and financial, maybe environmental more than financial, but I can tell you in Carlisle, it's all about financial, and Carlisle does have a blocking rate for capital projects, and they will use it, so, regardless of what I might feel about the project, I need to represent what I think Carlisle says, and-
Which is very helpful for us.
You can, and tomorrow, we're talking to them, you can explore that with them, but you're not gonna get much from the finance committee, I think it's, it's the sense that it's too much, and that was the issue, so I agree with Wally, I believe it would have failed last year, doesn't mean it will fail, but I think if you do the same thing, it will fail, so, I was trying to think differently about it, okay, and I'll just offer a couple of things, one is, I mean, if, if safety's the issue, if safety's an issue, and that's the road, that's an easy one to defend, it's very hard to say, don't want to have a safe road, so that's a point. On the parking itself, I, I take it that, you know, it's a, it's a stressful item, but, going back to our civics and stuff, if we're looking at things through a lens of environmentally conscious citizens, we probably shouldn't be encouraging more driving, we should be thinking of other ways to help kids get to school, maybe it's not the school bus, so, you know, one thought I had, again, this is sort of out of the box, is, right now, we're paving this, our own school parking lot in Carlisle, and as it happens, because we're doing it, we're also putting in charging stations, and we're trying to figure out how that works, can anybody charge, but, you know, an idea, and I have talked to Wally about it, is, maybe, you know, you couple it with putting charging stations in, and you, you give priority to people who, who drive chargeable vehicles, you know, you figure out something that generally will, in the long run, help the parking situation, but will encourage it in a way that will reframe it or rebrand it.
I, I'm trying to, I agree with Daisy, and I think that whatever we do here, we have to actually aim at maybe the more problematic part of the, of color in this vote. The idea that Jared is now checking, you said, well, that's, that's better than nothing, I tend to believe we're not there, I don't, I don't think that we should go to better than nothing, I think that we should find a solution, and this will give, doing this will give about forty, maybe half of what we need or less, and it will create a bottleneck, it's forty or fifty young drivers that have to back up into a road all in the same time, it's true, don't like it, don't like it, really, don't like it, it's a, it's a formula for mess and accidents. I think we should aim at having parking lots, I think we should do it baby steps, I don't think we should bundle it with anything else, we should decide that this is a, I, I, when this came up, before I was a committee member, I immediately said, no, kids shouldn't drive, and then I've learned with Bob Grom and this superintendent, and I was totally convinced, and I'm, you know, that it is actually a priority, and we have to, I think, from all the projects of the advisory committee, I think we should decide, because the advisory committee left many, many things as viral, and then send it to us to decide the priorities, so I think that we should decide the priorities, and then we should not bundle it with anything else, and, and there is a possibility to do it easier and cheaper on the existing cap, but doing this, first we take it further away from school, and at the end of the day, we block future developments, and I think we should try and avoid it, you know, I don't know if track, I don't know if rink, I don't, but I don't think that we should, for the very limited area that we have for our community, it's growing school, I don't think we should do now something that will limit any possibilities for the future, so we should continue with the current location, despite the fact it's maybe a little more expensive and a touch more complicated. But I think that we should try and form, in all this discussion, a coalition with the groups of sustainability Concord and Cala, and find out what we can, what we should bring to the table, that we convince them to support it, it can be charging station, it can be using proceeds for offsets of carbon emission, there are many, many ideas that were thrown during the discussions about it, but I think that we have to come to the next two town committees with a coalition, with the sustainability groups, but I think that we really have to continue pushing for the part of the parking next to the school, and really decide that this is what we concentrate on, at the moment, just concentrate.
Would you concentrate on that over the road?
Yes, my only, for me, you know, I don't know how the roads in Carlisle, but this road is horrible, and-
They're western.
And on my way home, on Marlborough Street, I have a much worse road, and we also, like, you know, we should actually limit the speed, but not sign, I mean personally, over the road, easily.
In response to your whole comment, I've been looking for an opportunity to say this, I agree with everything you just said, Yuval.
I want to be right, it's not, the meanings are not good enough.
So I have a question.
What can I have to say, as well? I want Wally to say that.
For the record.
So to me, the two biggest things that we need to- So to me, the two biggest things that we need to fix are the sidewalk and the lighting, cause both of those are safety issues. The sidewalk's horrible. I mean, what worse than the road? Cause you don't, you know, people are trying to walk on that thing at night, but the lighting in the sidewalk, it's treacherous at best. So I, I.
Well, and can I just add a, I mean, we are forcing, we're not forcing, but kids are parking off campus. So now we've got kids in the winter time when it's almost dark when they're at school and if they stay after, it is dark. Walking to God knows where in the community to get their car on the pathway that's.
And those two people who actually walk, you know, to and from. So I don't want to throw that option out, cause I think no matter what, we have to figure out a way to address those two things. Because, you know, we sort of couple them all together and I think somehow or another we should be able to, to fix the lighting. I don't, I don't think that's.
We added two poles, uh, we did. Almost two years, eighteen months ago, just to get it better.
Right.
So there may be options.
Right.
Like that.
And that, and that was a two hundred thousand dollar item within the access road package of one point two. What you're describing. Although this reads lights, I'm not reading. Okay, and curbing is, is an à la carte without a price there. In Gail's report.
This is something we should approach the town of Concord and see whether.
So the town of Concord's been very engaged. They did the engineering work for the BD roadway and saved us over a hundred thousand dollars last year. They're actively talking with us about the parking lot and felt strongly that they needed more support, cause it, with the drainage and all of that, they would need a lot of subcontractors. So that wasn't something they were totally ready to embark on. Jared met with them uh, less, just about a week ago and re-engaged with them on this whole project. So I don't, we can continue to talk if you have other questions for them. They're the ones getting, helping to inform us on whether we can.
Is the road, is the town road, it's common road?
No, it's a regional road.
Reach though, yeah.
Done.
Yeah.
Yours.
Exactly. That's my right, I mean, that's a question.
You can see yours, what it.
I just want to put out there, I'm assuming, you know, it's not like we can pick out, oh, just the curbs. And assuming that we do the road later, cause then I'm gonna do the road, you, you pull up the curbs. Is that, and we probably don't know the answer to this question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. With lighting, there seems like maybe we could do some things to fix it, you know, small things to make it better. With, but with the sidewalks, is there a patching option where we could patch?
You could just fix the sidewalks.
To, to make it safer.
You could do that in your.
Right, out of the operating, that's where I'm going with this. Can, could we address that, those safety issues out of the operating budget that's maintenance and then not have it as part of this capital discussion?
I think so.
If that's a possibility, I would recommend that we think along those lines. And then we're just, we're comparing the park, let's call them two parking options, the one up on the screen versus Wally's idea of adding to the, the ring road. Comparing those two and the road. And among those, I would agree with you all again, that we need to focus on fixing the problem, not just creating a one-third solution. And I would also say that my opinion and Joanna would probably rightfully slap my hand if she was still here, because she was great at reminding us all that we, the school committee, whoever was on it, committed years ago to finish the road when we finished the building and we haven't yet. And she was very good about reminding us that we need to. At the same time, in this moment in time, I feel like the parking is the more important issue because of that social emotional lens that we've been talking about and the stress that it has. So my recommendation would be we focus on the parking lot and put other things.
Have you guys, I mean, we just went through this in Carlisle. Did you consider solar canopies?
Yeah, we've considered a lot. We love it, but the grid can't.
It's municipal light in Concord, so it's, it needs a little more time.
Right. But I also, and, and I agree with you, David, I, about coming in as a coalition and thinking about things like solar charging stations. I think we should think of ways to offset their.
Well, I mean, from a, just to be practical, if you're going to repave or create new pavement, given the trend line of conversion to electric, it would be silly not to put the infrastructure in when you pave it so that it's there when you need it. You don't have to actually provision the boxes. You just have to wire up.
I think we've provided for that already.
And maybe, maybe, sorry. I, uh, I think engaging the environmental groups and down, there's primarily three of them, I think. Is a great idea. And understand what it would take to, to get them to, to support this. Um, I'm not ready to walk away, I, I, I want to hear about this expanding. If we have to expand the road, expand the road and put some, some angular, some angled parking. I mean, kids already drive around town looking for a place they don't have to parallel park. And now we're gonna, you know, I mean, if they can't learn to park in a angular parking space here, um, then, you know, do we want to unleash them on the rest of the world?
We're, we're talking about turning it to one way.
What's that?
So we would definitely need to do a traffic study.
Well, my idea, and, you know, it would, it's, we'd have to do it, we'd have to do it. I don't know if it's a traffic study or if it's the fire and police say, you know, you can only do it if we can do this to it. Um, to, you know, so they have access either way or whatever the way they want it. You know, I, I, you know, I don't know. We would, we, we're trying to find out. One, we're trying to find out if it's even feasible.
Sure, I'm sure.
Two, and then, you know, once we, if it's feasible, then, you know, we have to decide, do we want to expend the energy to find out what else we would have to do?
Right.
Um, but.
And that's worth getting that information.
I mean, if we, cause I, and I mean, I, I, you know, I don't know that.
So let's.
Frankly, I don't know that it wouldn't go back to the town with the same thing we did last year, except to warn us, one's the road and one's the parking lot.
I understand. So, uh, let me just, we are constantly, we're currently talking to Rich Rain about this particular idea. And he can give us an idea as what else we would have to do.
Yes, so some level of a list, for sure.
Do you think that might be available next week or?
Yeah, Jared, I got him on text. He's gonna call Rich tomorrow and we'll find out where we're at.
I wanted to address something that Dave said, and actually it was my initial for everything. I jumped, not here. I just heard about it, I jumped. And this is something we all have to address. It was addressed before. It was addressed opening town. It was addressed in the minutes here. But this was something that we will have to address again both, in both towns. And this is the idea that if we will not have enough parking, kids will not drive. It's not realistic. You know, at the end of the day, we have to actually understand the difference between utopia and realism. And it's just not realistic. We have to find a way to actually convey this message, that this is simply not happening. And too many, I mean, even the community, I'm not speaking about the kids. Parents that have been driving kids to school for years are waiting for the moment to stop driving them. You know, the, the interests are not only in the kids to drive, but the parents want to encourage them to drive because of their, so.
And just to point out.
Parents drive and drive.
And come back later on, so.
And come back, it's like it's two trips, exactly.
You know, so at the end of the day, we have to actually, and we, we bring this point again, that we have to explain to the community that, yeah, this is the whole idea of carpooling and all those solutions are great on paper. They simply not work.
I wouldn't dismiss carpooling. I wouldn't dismiss pushing kids to form carpoles and granting parking privileges to demonstrably, so. I mean, I don't know, cause I don't, I mean, when I mentioned that to Melissa of Moro, was she in the community last year? Yeah, you know, and I, I thought it was kind of junior's parking was not top of my list, let's put it that way. She has a junior this year. She goes, stay out of your swim lane. So I get it. I have any profession.
Several issues to carpool, to the carpooling idea.
So the kids are actually, they're, they have, um, when they're assigning parking for the seniors, they are looking at if the kids are carpooling. So my kids are actually, there's three of them going to school every day. They are bringing a neighbor. So the kids are doing this. And to your point, uh, the kids, even when you think they will not be driving, they are driving even when they're juniors. However, their safety is not accounted for here because they are parking on the streets around Concord and they are walking. Um, and they're walking in all sorts of weather and they're walking at night. So, um, we, we have to consider that as well.
Safety issue also.
Um, the, the carpooling piece, there's, there's two, two issues and, and absolutely people who form their own carpooling and, and, you know, we give them uh, some opportunity, the better opportunity is fine. Us being a proponent of carpooling, uh, I would, I am concerned, opens us up to some legal liability. We don't want to take on. And second of all, if somebody is a new driver, they can't drive anybody other than.
Except their supervisor.
So we certainly don't want to encourage them to violate the law.
Can I ask a question about, um, and I know this will recover very many spaces, but did we ever consider striving for compact cars?
We've talked about it. Um, we haven't got as far as actually doing anything.
It's got like ten spots at best or something, so.
It's, it's been on the list.
Okay.
Actually, when I suggested here a single time, I think it's, it's, it's not from here, but from there, that there'd be different fees according to, you know, electro, uh, uh, electric cars would be cheaper fees or no fees. And then hybrids and then eight cylinders, big one, everybody looked at me and I thought.
I have a lot of concern about that, cause the kids aren't picking the cars. They're not.
Yeah, they're not paying, the parents will pay as well.
No, understood, but, uh, there's an equity piece.
Yeah, but that's, I, I remember this conversation. It sounded good, but I remember how I was looked at.
When is the, um, so what's the calendar in terms of getting a warrant?
The warrant articles this year are due January eleventh. Um, we do have a week after the.
You have a lot of time, you gotta build some advocates.
Preliminary articles are due like December sixth or something.
I mean, again, given the Carlisle perspective, I think if you just pick, and again, I'm not prioritizing, cause I don't know, but if you just pick the parking, that was what, for whatever reasons, that was the one that was, I think it would be okay. I just think the two together was like, come on, you guys, you just built a building.
Yeah, and David, having sat, you know, and met multiple times with Carlisle on this and then in town meeting, I mean, proportionally to what your capital budget is in Carlisle.
It's nothing.
Uh, 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 you know, it just, yeah.
A million dollars would be quite a thing for us, right?
Yeah.
And the other thing is, that, that would actually bothers me was the idea of the pilot parking in front of BD, because this will have to be part of the road. And then the road item, even without enlarging it, was way more expensive than the parking. So we go to Carlisle that believe that the road is not theirs because they believe that it belongs to Concord. And tell them, we're not really giving a full solution to parking. We give only forty percent solution with a price tag that is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher, we might actually lose this lot. I think we should go for winning, you know, and, and.
Yeah, I, I would absolutely, if we came away solving the parking problem, I would be very happy. I, I think it would be disingenuous of us not to point out we are going to have to pave the road.
Yeah.
So.
And it will cost a war fee that we.
You know, if we, if we build a parking lot and then, you know, a year from now we build the road, then at least we've taken care of the
I have a request.
Order of it.
Can we find out? Cause that's gonna be the next question. If we pull this apart and we say, we'll only do the parking. What, can somebody tell us what's the economy of doing the project simultaneously versus pulling them apart?
This was already done.
We were told, correct me if I'm wrong, that there was not the economy we had hoped.
That was the original idea, but it proved wrong.
There, I think we were told in this room, there are outfits that do parking lots and outfits that do roads. And you'd be talking to two different kinds of firms, which was new to us. We thought pavement was.
That's great news.
And maybe, uh, this one thing about the road. The, the fact that the road will deteriorate tomorrow will not change the price. Because at the end of the day, we are reclaiming the road. The, the recommendation of Gail is to go all the way to the. So you take everything, doesn't matter what the condition.
Except the maintenance.
Yeah, and the, and the other thing is that road prices is usually linked to crude oil prices. And this is like, so economically, it's a open question mark about the road and it's really linked to crude oil prices and nothing else.
So would the parking?
Sorry?
Shouldn't parking be the same asshole?
Yes, yes, yes. But, no, but Cynthia was afraid if we wait in the deterioration, but she's not, meanwhile, we have to maintain.
No, I'm just saying, just not in terms of the, the, the flow.
And you have to make somebody, either superintendent or one of the chairs that have been doing it now for, we are now very late October. We will have to be ready with this warrant article for December. What's the timeline? What are we expecting? Because we, we cannot actually, we cannot continue talking about it a lot. We have to actually decide and move.
I think we, we have, we, we have a warrant article.
Yes.
I mean, it's, we would have to update the estimates and, um, and that sort of thing. I, I think, I, I don't think it would be a problem for us at this point to get together. I think, you know, really what we, and this is a good conversation, we need to decide what we want to do as a group. And recommend and, you know, do we want to put a warrant article on this year's warrant? And if we do, then what's, what is it? What are they?
So Wally, I assume you would still like to hear about the possibilities of the idea you proposed.
It's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's already in the works, so.
Yeah, so I would say let's, um, I think we've had a good conversation. Let's wait and hear what comes forward with the idea on November fifth. And I think can also digest what we thought about. Were we just parking forward, not doing the road? Um, and I hope the, improving the lighting and the.
I think there's just one kind of question that we haven't addressed much, that Wally referenced. Um, I agree that we should get the information on Wally's idea. I agree that it sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement that we need to focus on the parking and request some.
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't.
I don't think we've heard that.
That's right.
It, yeah, the, the, the voices have been heard. Um, and that we need to make that our first priority. I think the thing we haven't addressed is, to Wally's point, there's also the possibility of submitting two separate warrant articles.
Right.
Um, and, and that's a question that we have to think about. Do we want, do we put up perking first and say, this is our first priority and let's go for it. But do, do we have, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, it's a question we haven't answered. Do we have then another one that comes after it saying, there's also this road and we've said for years we should replace it and, and here's the opportunity to do it.
But you're on the risk that some people will think the road's more important.
Yeah.
Your vote down. You're, I think you're better off saying, really, this mishmash doesn't always play a role.
Right.
You say, look, we're the school committee. We spent countless hours analyzing blah, blah, blah. The administration is doing this and that. This is a big issue for us. This is why. This is the solution. And here it is, you know, and you just kind of don't give, I don't know how you're telling each one, but you give people time to get up in the mic and, oh, with this and that. So he'll be there for a day and a half and it may not be the outcome.
Oh, that never happens in Congress.
At the end of the day, from what happened last year, correctly, from my perspective, from what happened last year when it was a much larger. Is that if, and that's actually, sorry, what happened last year is if we did not have, if we would have had the coalition with the sustainability groups, the article would have gone through, even larger as it was. So I think, but it would have failed probably in color. So I think honestly, I, I agree with David and I agree with Boris as well. We have to take a stand about one thing. We shouldn't, we should concentrate on the most important thing that we want to achieve coming April and not actually divert attention and give people the options between this or that, because we weakening the point that we're trying to make as priority. And we have better chance in color as well, because we can see the two, if, if the two things will pass here.
Well, you're running simultaneous meetings is only drawback this year.
Yeah.
Normally you're ahead, so we already know the outcome. When we know the outcome, we don't, we suddenly don't have any choice. This year there's a little bit more wiggle room, but I agree with that. I mean, if they know it's going in Congress.
But I, I would recommend that, Tyler, he was waiting for Jared to come back from Rich with these answers. I don't know if superintendent or one of us should already reach and start speaking to the other groups, other stakeholders, because the earlier will be.
You start tomorrow.
Yeah.
I think that's worth, like.
Well, I think we should wait until we as a committee vote and make a determination.
No, but you can, I mean, you, just on the topic of tomorrow, you can, it's not, it's really more, they're in an informa, this is Carlisle FinCon, they're in an information gathering mode. It's a good opportunity to float your concept and you're saying, you know, we want to be aware that we have this parking, you're socializing.
Well, I can just say, I was with Dr. Hunter in front of one of these committees and she worked extremely hard. And there wasn't very much movement, so maybe we'll read a different. But, you know, I don't think that that issue was ignored wholeheartedly at all. I think there was a lot of outrage last year and I think we should understand that that isn't something that this committee or administration did not decide not to do because it was done.
Right, it's nice.
I think there's one, there's a nuance in what we're talking about now, which is really talking about what, you know, going up overtake.
We had some of that and then it, yeah, that got tricky too.
If there's not going to be support, there's not going to be support, we'll know that. But I don't think it hurts us to.
No.
Not on this, but we would be in a much community. We, when we come to town meeting, we come with something we believe, so we believe it's good for the community. So the community would be in a better position if we integrate those solutions, even if we do not get, you know, the blessing of those groups. But we hear what Mike, he's, they're more informed than us, they have many ideas, we can hear ideas. And we will integrate and come as a whole, that we'll give those solutions even if we don't have a yes upfront.
And it would show that we listened to the feedback last year and we're incorporated.
And actually, I think that the other thing is that, is that I think that everyone sitting at this table believes that we should actually come with sustainable options. It's not that we are doing it only in order to get the thought, I think there's one person who will just become a leader for living.
The only thing I want to be sure of.
Every person on this table actually believes we should do it.
We do have a, can I just add this because I don't want you reaching out without maybe having beneficial information. The Sustainable Action Plan that we met on last week has a goal about reducing single car rides to school and we've got a set of steps planned there and I just want to be sure we all stay synced up with each other because a lot of those people are in the room already.
Yes.
And maybe we need to just navigate that. So it's a complimentary piece and not just school committee coming at parking without the big picture work we're doing because I think that's to our benefit and the parking is good.
Without my consent, I would.
That was my concern, yeah.
We wouldn't be stepping on each other.
Exactly, that's the first thought.
So I would just say, don't reach out between now and next week, let's talk on what we're doing.
No, no, coordinate.
Get organized.
So, so I think what I, what I hear is into, there's a general consensus that parking is the most important aspect of this. And that ideally we do a parking lot that gives us enough spaces to take care of the problem. And that we, we, I take what I hear is that we should focus on that exclusively.
And just answer what you said is that I think that we should, despite of maybe an easier solution, we should concentrate on the solution that we give places for growth and other projects in the future.
Yeah, and if we do choose the parking lot, David will deliver Carlisle.
So I pretty much agree with that.
On a silver tray.
So because we'll be coming back to this November fifth, I would like to digest everything we've talked about.
Yep.
And, you know, not have a longer discussion, but hopefully just.
My question was going to be, do we want to ask for a preliminary warrant article? That we can have to talk.
Does that mean putting somebody to task for pricing?
I think it just gives us something to look at. I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't. I wouldn't put the effort into updating it from an estimate standpoint.
But you're talking based on.
Till we voted that we wanted to do it that way, but at least we've got it to look at.
But we, so it sort of seems antithetical to the fact that we want to look at this other option. We're asking you to train to look at this other option, the warrant article with the existing option, right?
Yeah, the one we have from last year's town meeting.
Oh, you have to update the cost.
Agreed, agreed.
But I think that's a part of the process.
That's true.
Reading the language of a warrant, if you want.
The earlier we have information, the more information that we have, the more we'll be ready to discuss it and decide. So whatever you can do in order to update, a process update, prices and stuff, I think.
We have a lot of people very familiar with the campus now and the projects, so I actually feel like we can turn that around pretty quickly.
So I think asking for warrant articles, I think we've agreed.
Sure.
Yeah, so I think we should.
Not necessarily. It's just, it's a draft of something that it sounds to me like this.
I mean, does it that much different than doing, I mean, the math?
It's my turn to actually say that I agree as a body.
So we'll, we'll figure it out. Okay. Good discussion.
All right.
So bus depot operating expenses.
We follow, I'll open it and then you can take it from there. We're following up on last week's conversation, so Jared's provided you that last piece we were talking about, which is the utilities at the office space. And that's an easy, easy process as we talked about, I think, to just formally finish that. So hopefully we've captured everything here and now we're pretty squared up in terms of utility cost shares between all both facilities that the bus depot and the bus, the transportation offices are coming out of. I think there was probably some follow-up pieces. Wally and I have been talking about the finance committee meeting in Concord last week where we were asked about bigger picture operational consideration, more in the terms of rent being allocated back to the, especially the regions, so Carlisle pays that. So we've resurrected the 2012 memo from Carlisle, so you'll want to be sure you have that, Erin. Erin, do you mind pulling that up? Am I skimming too quickly over the utility cost? It feels pretty tight at this point.
It's clear.
So this is the memo and this is what drove us to make sure the utility splits were in place. There's a looming question, at least from one Concord FinCon member, of whether Carlisle's paying its adequate share. So this memo would be your guiding document, I think, in terms of.
In what sense?
Weighing that in bigger than utilities, actual usage of and coming up with a cost for rent to the region for the use of the bus depot. I don't know what that number would include exactly. I think we sort of throw that back to you. We can equate it to our time in the depot in Acton while we were under construction, which was a ninety thousand dollars or just shy that was charged to the districts to use the space. So I'm leaving that open and.
So what, in the, not that memo, but in the Jared memo, utilities, I got it.
Yeah.
Which paragraph is the one that is at action here?
No. Two different separate sections?
Yeah, so we've shifted topics here a bit, so a bigger discussion.
I mean, try to approach it differently, maybe I don't get it. There's a historical maybe misallocation from the time the bus depot was built to right now, right? Is that what this is saying?
Very minor, which is now corrected.
So we're done with that?
That's the question. Are we done with that?
Well, I suggest we should be if it's minor. I mean.
No, because there's a bigger discussion of whether that's sufficient.
Well, I mean, I mean to true up from the building of it to the point now and then to go forward. I think I already got chewed out by chewouts over playing, but I got a, I got a note back from the Carlisle FinCon about that building, so.
I don't think that was our intention.
So I, I think.
We actually discussed it, you said.
Yeah.
Okay, so then it's your, isn't, doesn't that make the point of the passage removed? Because it's all Concord stuff, it's just I split it up?
That would be the question. So there's some sentiment in Concord, at least what was voiced to us, that it would be more than just utilities that would get charged to the regional assessment. And I don't know that we have more clarity than that. I think the discussion has to happen among the committee as to whether the charge for utilities is sufficient to cover Carlisle's portion.
Again, what I'm saying is, if we just said, okay, whatever happened, happened, there was some, you know, whatever happened. It's still pretty small money as far as I can see.
Yeah.
I mean, we signed, I wouldn't even analyze the payroll, the pay warrant, you know, if it was chain of customer, like.
You would, maybe that's also.
Well, let me just finish. So to me, it simplifies the issue if we say, okay, whatever happened, happened. And whether it's CBS or Town of Concord or, who knows? Okay, fine. Now we start with new budget, which we're in the budget and just let's get the right, whatever the right math is. And Carlisle pays its portion and the region pays its portion and we're done. To me.
I think that's precisely what we're talking about, but the utility is a very small part.
So do they not utilities? But I'm just saying, don't complicate a reach back.
I don't.
We're not trying.
Nobody's.
I don't think anybody's expecting it, but I don't think this 2012 memo.
I misunderstood. Oh, we're looking at a 2012 memo.
I'd be less politically correct, but I always am moderate. At the end of the day, 2012 memo says to us very gently that if we want to, we, Concord, want to do it our way, it's our problem. But at the end of the day, we have capital investment, we have location stuff that we are, we as Concord are servicing our Concord population and the region. And color is not participating, not paying for it. If it would have been an outsourcing, they will deal the region and Concord and color will pay their part according to the regional agreement and in this case, it's not happening.
But it's because you maybe not, I mean, it says it pretty clearly, Carlisle pays share the operational expenses. So I think it's just an issue internal to Concord, what is the appropriate split? What is operational, whether it's depot, utilities, whatever it is, just whatever it is, it is. I don't think.
So I think that this is not a discussion yet for this committee. I think that this Concord's committee should actually, or Concord Finance Committee, I don't know who, should decide how much Concord is charging the region. And then it should come, this number should come to this committee.
So can I clarify? I think that's what they've done for us. It's a matter of how you define operational expenses in here. What, how we've defined operational expenses so far are the expenses that we have to pay out, basically utilities, the actual operational expenses that we have to pay out to maintain the building and split those. The question that came up from the Concord Finance Committee was, should we, should there also be rent included? Should operational expenses include some form of rent to use the space?
And what the superintendent.
If that's the case, it's a bigger number than we're.
Yeah, and what the superintendent said is precise, the way to go about it, which means to know how much we paid when it was an outsourcing, when it was Acton, you know, and take this number and.
No, I wouldn't do, no, I think you have a, there's a bill that Concord pays to run the building.
Yeah, right.
Right? And there's some amortization of the capital, I guess. I mean, just do it the way you do it, right? It's a fair, whatever fair arms like the rent, you know, rent.
Okay, and so I think that's the question.
I mean, the building's financed.
Okay, well, then just, I mean, it must be a standard way to do it. I don't know about.
FinCon should come to us as a number, that they think it's the right number to charge the region, no?
I don't know that that necessarily.
I don't know that they have the backup and the basic to come to that.
Put charity to this.
To me, the real crux to this is, and then, you know, maybe this needs to be a conversation with Carlisle, I don't know who in Carlisle, is there going to be, is, is, does this consider a rental fee for use of the building as part of operational expenses or not?
I'm going to say yes because when Doug wrote this, I was there when they did this and on finance committee. The point being made here was, we don't want to be in the bus buying business. We don't want to be in the bus building buying business because we don't believe that you need to control your own buses like you guys do. We use Bedford Charter, it's great, that's what it says, we love them. But Bedford Charter, when we get the bill, has the bus amortization, the driver's salary, the rent, the lighting, the overtime, who knows what, right? It's all baked in that number, so I don't read anything here that says we're not comfortable with basic third-party calculation of what it costs a bus and we recognize that we need to bus. So they just didn't want to get entangled in a capital project that they didn't think was necessary. We didn't, and I think that remains true. And I believe, if I'm now reading the Jared memo, that, are we talking about the twenty-nine thousand of operating expenses? I mean, it's not a huge number, is it?
Well, if you just, I mean, let's just throw a number up there, not know that it's the right number, but we have a number and that's why we paid Acton rent space over there, the owner of the property. And we paid ninety, ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I don't see anything like that.
That's not in here.
Right.
I see twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Because this does not.
This doesn't cover a rent number, that's the point.
Where's the rent?
So that, okay, so that's what came up. This, this was done calculating just our actually, our actual bills that we pay, utilities, so and.
Well, I get the utility part, but I'm on to the maintenance.
Right, 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 so we, but maintenance was considered utilities. So what was pointed out to us the other night at finance committee was, you should also take into account a rent calculation for which we would need to then find a fair market value for rent calculation. So this is not a rent calculation. We would then need, if we want to cover that, we have to establish a fair market value.
You know.
Charge it to.
I'm actually okay with whatever you do because three quarters of whatever you do comes right side.
Comes right side.
So if you want to do it, do it. I really don't care. On a thirty million dollar operating budget, even ninety thousand, I think it's ridiculous, but if, it's ninety and it's twenty to Carlisle?
Right.
Okay, you know, I just think it's a waste of time. I just think it's a waste.
Yeah, it ends up ten percent by the time you do.
I think it's a waste of time. I, I think, I think you have a memo here that says, okay, if you want to add maintenance, whenever, capital improvement, you know, whatever you put in, I wouldn't go to some historical, folklorical Acton. I just would say, just aside and just.
These are the costs.
These are the costs.
I'm thinking, how do we move forward?
Right, exactly.
So my, my, I'm going back to what I'm actually saying. Somebody, Jared probably, he's the finance, should actually quantify it. And either say to us, it's not worth even discussing because at the end of the day, Concord builds the district, we have to actually add item line to the district.
Or your budget's going up to the region to do this.
Recuperate three and a half thousand dollars at the end of the year for color. So Jared should actually put the numbers and see and comes to us with numbers. Not that, we're not speaking about big ideas. David actually says it's not a big idea, it's about numbers and he's been coming.
This memo was making a big idea point. They were saying, we don't, we don't think you have the, you know, mind the ore that makes the bus that drives the kids.
Can I, can I, with all due respect to everybody here, this is what I wanted to hear, Kimberly, as well. And so what I would say we do is we just give, if you'll give me the ability to talk to Jared and Laurie about this, we'll come back with something conceptually that is how we would handle this that's, you know, kind of gets us through the gauntlet of, you know, taking care of everybody on this. And we'll come back next week with some concept.
So the one point before, and then I totally agree with you, is whatever number, if we do this, your budget goes up and then you're going to get the money back from both communities.
Makes your battle harder for you.
Because I tell you, where's even, why have to go into item lines?
Then we'll, we'll.
We'll cover that. Thank you.
We just needed to know which way to go.
Okay.
Okay. Next is.
Voting.
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 We're going to vote, yeah, so we, we have, we're putting forward Court and myself as the negotiating representatives to the CCTA bargaining and, and the CTA compensation bargaining aspect for this coming year.
Thank you.
The, I don't think we have a motion anyway, so. Somebody want to make a motion of that effect?
So I would, I would move that we appoint Wally and Court to the CCTA bargaining team for this year. We'll conquer one for CTA separately. That's the motion.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
With thanks.
Thank you.
And for Concord, I would accept a motion to appoint Wally and Court to do the CTA bargaining on purely the financial aspect.
Sounds good.
Any discussion there? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so I think we just negated the need for a Concord portion of this meeting, so the last item.
A middle school building.
Hold on.
We need to.
We were gonna talk about middle school.
Oh, we wanted to, wasn't it?
Building, because.
Okay.
We have vaping resolution.
So the vaping resolution. The, Ray Conside had talked to us about this last week. I don't know if we need to have any conversation about. The question on the table is, do we want to submit our approval of this resolution to Tobacco-Free Massachusetts? It was gonna bundle all of these coming from boards of health and school committees and sports and selectmen. And, and if we do, is, I've made some changes here that actually David recommended. We had kids all over and we changed for minors. I think part of the, it's coming from school committee, it ought to be grammatically correct. So we made a couple of grammatical changes. And, and then I know David had recommended something other than big tobacco, because that, didn't make that change on here. Because I, I know that that's a term of description these days in the space. And I didn't wanna take that out of the realm of what the committee might wanna put forward. So I would, I guess, is there any discussion about this as it stands? And then if, once we are comfortable with what it says, we can vote on whether to resolve. So I would open up for a discussion about the wording and contents of the resolution.
I'm pleased that this discussion made it this far. Was it a year ago when we decided not to weigh in on a marijuana public health issue? And insofar as kids in schools are, in fact, our responsibility. And we're an elected body with the prerogative to make our opinion known. I'm glad we're considering it. I agree with you, big tobacco is an unnecessary pejorative. Stands nicely without that. A question I posed, I'm not sure I got clarity on it. The last statement, if we're suggesting that there should be excise tax parity, I think that's what it's about. Creating excess, excess, excise tax parity for e-cigarettes and other vaping products. Does that not necessitate a with something? Parity with what?
Tobacco.
Exactly. So I think we need to say it.
Yeah, because you just said that.
Because if you want parity, you've gotta refer to what you want parity with.
Yeah.
It's minor, but technically necessary, I think.
I support that.
With tobacco.
With tobacco products. Parity with tobacco products. For e-cigarettes and other vaping products.
Exactly.
So the, the ban is on flavored tobacco products, but not on flavored e-cigarettes? Or are they considered?
Pardon?
Is the, is the ban on flavored tobacco products or on flavored e-cigarettes or both? Or is, are e-cigarettes considered a tobacco product?
I believe some flavors have been approved at the federal level, menthol, for example.
For cigarettes, yes.
For cigarettes and so on.
So, but what are we supporting a ban of tobacco things?
It's, uh, well, what we're doing here really is, we're trying to influence legislation and support. The whole notion of this is to support a, a, some legislation that will limit and create excise tax for e-cigarettes, Juul, and whatever.
Are, are e-cigarettes considered tobacco products?
No.
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 So I think you wanna say flavored e-cigarettes and vaping.
And.
The beep known, yeah, the beep known is actually, has a problem with the word.
Right, it should say ban on flavored e-cigarettes, right?
Well, I mean, the, the, the.
Well, we should, we would.
I mean, the Board of Health of Concord is, I can't guarantee I'm gonna get this 100% right. But I know that they are considering and they are, there's a public hearing coming up in a couple of weeks. And they're gonna make a decision whether to, you know, how far this ban goes.
Okay.
You know, do we, do you ban vaping products and flavor, do you ban vaping products outright? Do you ban vaping products and flavored cigarettes? I mean, they're considering that, menthol, because those are primarily targeted at kids. And, and then the other piece is that you would only be able to sell any of these products, which is not addressed on here. Any of these products in a, in a special standalone store, which would then have to be licensed by the community. So those are what's on the table for Concord. So I think having a ban on flavored tobacco products.
Wally, Wally, excuse me, but at the end of the day, I, I did notice it from today, but there is no correlation between the last whereas and the beep not. Because in the beep known, we're not asking a ban on vaping, on, on, on e-cigarettes.
Just say tax it more.
Precisely. It isn't just this correlation, it's a wording issue. It's not a, everybody understands what we wanna say and we all agree on it. But unfortunately.
If we can't take a vote on the ban, we voted the ban.
So I.
Right away.
You know, at the end of the day, the whole document and the whole current crisis is about vaping and, and e-cigarettes. And at the end of the day, we're speaking only about flavored tobacco products. And, and, and financials, the ban on vaping and finan, financial excise. So there's a problem, there is a word.
Doesn't it, does it include it? So under the fourth whereas, it's clarified that nicotine is derived from tobacco. So if there's nicotine in the e-cigarettes, are they still considered tobacco products? Does it cover everything as it's written?
How about we say flavored tobacco and vaping products?
Great.
And creating excise parity of.
Does that cover it?
Yes.
Flavored and unflavored. Because the, the flavored, what actually happened with them is that they wanted, they're concentrating now.
But I think this is about.
On the menthol, in order to include everything. You remember yesterday?
Right, but this is focusing on flavored e-cigarette vaping products.
Flavored tobacco products and.
To say unflavored tobacco products is to say a ban on all cigarettes and.
No, I think he's saying ban, ban vaping, I mean.
Vaping.
Unflavored.
And any vaping, but the governor's trying that, he's getting a lot of pushback, so.
Yeah.
Go forward with that.
But we can support it just the same.
All right.
So now, what do we wanna do about the first, the second, and third?
My, my point, I think, was I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't lead with it, as Court said, more elegantly than I can. You know, it stands well, if you remove that, it's still a pretty damning set of things.
Which one, sorry?
The very first whereas, you know, is accusatory and not really substantiated. Well.
Tobacco and e-cigarette companies.
Juul is not a big tobacco company, it's not, as far as we heard yesterday, the new CEO of Juul is the ex-CEO of Tidymore.
My concern is, is that Juul will say, well, we don't do that. You know, people say, we don't do that. Everything else is factual, right? You know, who's gonna say that nicotine's not bad for you? Who's gonna say that? So I don't know, I just felt like it didn't need it. But if you wanna add it, my suggestion is, I would just say, yeah, certain tobacco and e-cigarette companies are, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't leave yourself open to somebody saying, well, I don't do that.
Just replace big tobacco companies with corporations.
But then what we're doing is we're stating that we know their strategy, and we do know their strategy, but we can't definitively prove it. So why get into the debate? Just, we have a strong document anyway, is what you're assessing.
So you're saying delete the first whereas?
No, yes, exactly, because, well, let's imagine you, you know, can you defend?
The people who are biased to not like, the people who wanna support a ban will support it no matter what. The people you're trying to convince will read that as the first thing and say, ah, you know, it's liberal bias, blah, 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 blah.
Hold on, it summarizes what we're talking about, which is that flavors and cheap prices are being used to encourage minors.
So say it that way.
So let's say that. How about whereas flavors and cheap prices are being used to encourage minors, et cetera?
There you go.
Okay, great.
And they also have that direct marketing to kids.
Right.
And I can, I can take you straight to the CDC and prove that one.
So we're starting the sentence with flavors.
Correct. Right, flavors and cheap prices, and then adding are being used to encourage.
Okay.
And then.
Are being used.
Thank you.
Are being, flavors and cheap prices are being used.
Very good.
All right.
So can I have a motion?
I move to accept the resolution as amended by Heather.
And.
For both committees.
And that we are going to submit it to the entity that you mentioned.
Yeah, Tobacco-Free Massachusetts.
Thank you.
And we will submit it to Tobacco-Free Massachusetts on behalf of both committees.
You, are you second to both committees?
He can't move for both committees. No, you can't move on the committee.
Throw my motion.
From the Congress committee? I would take that motion from a Congress member.
Make a motion.
You can say the same motion for Congress. Okay, someone for Congress.
Second.
Okay, someone second for both of them. You've all seconded for both of them.
Any discussion? All in favor for the region?
I.
And all in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Thank you all. That is important work.
I'll take a motion to adjourn the region.
So moved.
So second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you Carlisle folks. Okay, a quick, we're not gonna be too much longer with Concord. Quick three-minute break and Concord will be right back. Okay.
All right, Ms. Hunter.
Thank you.